Good afternoon, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order for the afternoon of August 17th, 2021. If you're able to stand, please join us as we pledge allegiance. Thank you. Today's invocation will be provided by the Khmera Kram Buddhist monks of the Khmara Rangzi Temple. And Councilmember Esparsa will tell us more and will tell me if I've mispronounced anything.
Thank you, Mayor. You did it perfectly. So today, we are honored to have the Khmera Kram Buddhist monks from the United Khmera Kram nonprofit organization, which is known as the Khmara Rangzi Temple. I'd like to welcome the venerable Ratana Young and the venerable Sopanrit Khan, who will be giving a traditional blessing for good health, success, and peace to all in the Pali language of Theravada Buddhism. The Khmara Rangzi Temple was founded in 2002 by volunteers, and their mission is to preserve and promote Khmer identity and culture here in San Jose. In addition to conducting religious services, the Khmera Kram Buddhist monks teach meditation, perform community services such as blessing newlywed couples, those who are ill, and perform funeral services. The temple also holds Khmer language classes for both children and adults, and hosts a wide variety of community events throughout the year, and serves as a cornerstone for our Cambodian community here in San Jose. And it is my honor to have them here today. Thank you. I think they're going to get a little help with the mic.
Gentlemen, thank you. There are no ceremonial items today. I wanted to ask, though, for orders of the day, if we might take a moment of silence. We've just recently lost a member of our San Jose police force, 20-year veteran Mel Bari, who was out of town with his family. I was hoping we could take a moment to think of him and his family and of the San Jose community that mourns his loss. We'll do that at the conclusion of the orders of the day. Evening session was canceled by the Rules Committee. Item 10.2 will be heard in the afternoon. And staff is requesting to hear items 3.4, 3.7 relating to the terms of the various agreements that we have with various of our bargaining groups, our employees, to hear them together. They cover the same term. So that would be the orders of the day. Are there any changes? Okay, I see no one indicating they'd like to speak. I understand that Jennifer McGuire is on remotely for some period of time. I know she's out of state on a, at least temporarily, she will be on with us. All right. At this time, then, if we could just take a moment of silence for Officer Bari. Thank you. All right, on to the--
Mayor?
Yes.
And just a reminder, we're adjourning today's meeting in honor of Nicolas Jaramillo.
Forgive me, I wasn't aware. I'm seeing Nick is nodding his head. Would you like to--
It's in amended agenda, and I'm happy to take it from here.
Thank you, Councilmember.
There's a photo that, if you could post it, please.
Thank you very much.
There we go. I think, there we go. So Nicolas Jaramillo was an extraordinary man who touched so, so many people and lived a very inspirational life. He was originally from New Mexico, and he served in the Army for 12 years, after which he struggled to find his footing, returning to civilian life, and struggled with substance abuse and homelessness. Nick was taken in by Pastor Scott Wagers over 23 years ago, and I'd like to also extend my condolences to Pastor Scott and everyone at Cham Ministries who knew and loved Nick. And I'd also like to extend condolences to his mother, Mary, his daughter, Lauren, and his sister, Mariana. Nick not only turned his own life around, but he did it with a passion for helping others. He became a career hub coordinator for Goodwill Silicon Valley, drawing upon his own hardships and challenges to connect with others, especially other veterans who were struggling. And the mayor might remember one Veterans Day where this photo was actually taken, where Nick was actually late coming to the press conference because he had found a veteran in Plaza de César Chavez and was actually helping him at the event. And that's where the mayor and I both met Nick through his work as a partner in the All the Way Home Campaign to End Veteran Homelessness. And that's where Nick just grew in his leadership. He was an inspirational man with a generous man, generous spirit. In an interview with the Mercury News in December 2016, Nick stated, "In five years, my ultimate goal is to work with veterans at the VA right here." He was already an alcohol and drug counselor, and that was his five-year goal. Nick passed away last week in a car accident on his way back to California from New Mexico because he was about to start his dream job at the VA. His spirit lives on in the lives that he touched here in San Jose, and he leaves behind a very grateful community. And lastly, with your indulgence, Mayor, I just wanted to say that the news of Afghanistan can trigger a complicated wave of emotions. There's going to be much that's going to be said about what's happening in Afghanistan in the future. But for right now, I just wanted to share that the military crisis line offers free confidential support, 365 days of the year, seven days a week, 24 hours, for service members, veterans, their families, caregivers, and survivors. That number is 1-800-273-8255, or text 838255. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Esparsa. I appreciate your kind words about Nick and, obviously, your work with Nick and so many in the All the Way Home Campaign. Nick literally saved lives by his example of overcoming the incredible hardships that he endured. And so it's appropriate we honor him, and I apologize for overlooking the change to the agenda. All right. Unless there are any other changes to the print agenda, we're going to move on to this closed session report. Nora?
Hello, Mayor. Good afternoon, Council. We do not have anything to report out of closed session today. Thank you.
Okay. Next is the consent calendar. Are there any items that the council would like to pull? And I'm not seeing any names, so let's go to open session, I'm sorry, to public now. Tony?
Thank you. Thank you. One of the problems I've seen on Zoom call in terms of your transcript, it'd be great if you could see who was talking. So I couldn't tell if it was Maya Esparsa talking. There was no notification of that. So we need to have that so we can understand who's talking. And then in terms of, you know, just our whole meetings and how we are addressing our meetings, I was happy to see that our new general manager was at home, and she was zooming into the call. Thank you for doing that. It makes me feel that she would be a better leader for our community as we go for our charter review and having to look at who is going to be in charge of our city. The fact that she was at home is a sign that she understands the importance of the virtualization of our meetings. And that's something that I know we have it until September. That's what they're saying, oh, we have this until September. Now, I know that the powers that be want it to go away as quickly as possible because of the public input, that there's too much public input as far as the powers that be. And we need to change that. And our economy, as we go forward, needs to be a caring economy. That is the change that we need to have. And the care is how we live our lives. And if we have a caring economy, we would look at, the polluting is a sin, and it hurts our health, it destroys our health. So the compromises that you have made to be in person are what is destroying our world. And we are at the edge of the abyss, and we need to make transformational changes. And that is, you know, virtualization is a transformational change. And we need to have that continue, and we need your support to make that so, so that we get Governor, and of course, vote no to keep our governor, and that we have Governor Newsom say the emergency that we're under, we keep running under a virtualization, because the emergency is our climate crisis. And he knows that, and we need to keep the virtualization of our meetings. And we need your help.
Blair Beekman? Hi, Blair Beekman here. Thanks for the meeting today. To speak to item 2.8, there's a whole bunch of issues of city budget additions. I've heard that you're possibly trying to find ways to offer a bit of a pay raise to city government workers and employees. Thank you for this. It was spoken at Smart Cities meeting a few weeks ago, you know, the need to respect the job workers are doing in tough situations. And so it was a heartfelt time, so thank you for these efforts. For your boards and commission issues, I wanted to thank you for being able to add on to the San Jose Clean Energy Community Commission. Thank you for that. And I hope I could make a plea at this time that you can, for the future of the commission subcommittee process, that it can be an open process to the public in some form, and that if not open to the public, its meeting agenda minutes can be available to the public in some form. I think we have to work on this issue. There can be answers, and there are precedents throughout the country of local cities using the subcommittee process and the state using the local subcommittee process. It can be an open process. And a thank you to the work of the City Charter Commission and certain persons who are trying to create a spirit of public good. And thank you to them, and I don't want to discredit their hard-working efforts at all. And good luck to their continued effort. Thank you. Mike Oxlong, followed by Paul Soto. Mike Oxlong? Paul Soto?
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Council. This is Paul Soto from Horseshoe. I want to talk about the redistricting, okay? I would like to know, or at least have some kind of conversation regarding if you're going to use the redlining map from 1938. Because really, when you start talking about equity, justice, something happens to an Asian or a Mexican, all of a sudden, we want to become, you know, very moral, and yes, we stand for this racial justice, and we must have it. And then you have a policy like this. You actually have an opportunity to center what it is that you say from the dice. You have an actual opportunity to center that within policy. Now, what I need as a citizen is to know on record, public record, formally, as a council, that you are refusing to do that. Okay? That's what I need as a citizen, because I still continue to this very day, continue to deal with the generational impact politically, socially, economically, and existentially. In those four areas, I'm still cleaning up other people's mess. Okay? And so, and I'm tired, but the weight, it's getting heavy. You know, it gets exhausting. And so, you know, but I'm not going to stop either. Because if my parents and what it is that they experience in Sausal Pudus, if that has not taught me something about endurance, something about longevity, something about commitment, something about having an ethical framework that guided and influenced your behavior, that's what I learned from that. And so the impact of what put them in that area in the treatment that they received is centered on that map, and I hope to use it for the redistricting.
Returning to council?
Thank you, Tony. All right. Is there a motion on--
Move approval, second.
Let's vote. I believe we can do that electronically. That's unanimous. Okay, on to 3.1, which is the report of the city manager. Is that going to be Jennifer remotely?
Yes, it's going to be--
Okay, great.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I suspect there'll be a lot to be said on the next item, so we will have a robust conversation on 3.3, which is an extension of the proclamation of local emergency relating to COVID-19. And there is a presentation. And Lee will take it over.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. If I can ask the team to pull up the presentation and also take it up for me to the mayor and--
Council, members of the public. Lee Wilcox, deputy city manager for the city of San Jose. And joining the presentation today is Dolan Beckel, our-- today is Dolan Beckel, our interim deputy city manager, as well as Ray Reardon, our Director of the Office of Emergency Management. Today, we're going to cover recommendations around extending the local proclamation, our local emergency proclamation, which Ray will go over, and then you'll hear from Dolan and I around our COVID-19 Emergency Operations Center response with the emergence of the local, with the emergence of the Delta variant locally. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ray, who will walk us through the emergency proclamation extension.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and others attending today's session. I am Ray Reardon, the Director of the City Manager's Office of Emergency Management. As required by local ordinance and the Emergency Services Act, we've returned after 60 days of the last extension to request another extension due to the current conditions of the COVID-19 response. You have in your agenda the memo as well as the resolution for such action. With that, I'm going to turn it back to Lee as part of our presentation on the information related to this.
Thank you, Ray. Can we go to the next slide, please? Thanks, Dolan. Since May of this year, the administration and the Council have worked together to demobilize the city's Emergency Operations Center, which closed on June 30th. We engaged in a thorough and thoughtful process to move our long-term recovery structure and recovery items onto this roadmap. We also built these items into our committee work plans and separate council items to ensure transparent communications, communication between the administration, the council, the members of the public, but also give the council the opportunity to take action on these items if need be. Due to the unexpected and unplanned emergence of the Delta variant, we are now in a place to re-adopt a response posture by reactivating our Emergency Operations Center, which we did yesterday. As such, response, recovery, as well as all the other important items on the city roadmap, will need to help happen in parallel, placing strain on budget and staffing for the months to come. Next slide. As I mentioned yesterday, we did reactivate the city's Emergency Operations Center. This activation is what we're referring to as a stage four in emergency management, where we'll be focusing on monitoring the local situation, coordinating internally and externally, and communicating with our residents and workforce. While our original activation, that most of you were a part of last year, included hundreds of employees and an emergency operations center with huge operational responsibilities, this activation is a much more traditional EOC model, with a majority of operations remaining in departments and those directors serving in the Emergency Operations Center. This approach is needed so that we can do recovery, response, and the roadmap items at the same time. As we continue to monitor, we will reassess our activation level and personnel and the structure of the Emergency Operations Center as we move forward. In addition, we'll be updating the council about our response and covering what has changed, what is driving that change, and what is the city or our partners doing around these nine topics, so that we can keep the council and public informed of our efforts. We do not plan to go into recovery items as part of these reports, as we have built those into existing communications between the council, mayor, and city administration, but as we learn more about the conditions in our local community and how they change, we will keep the council informed through a variety of methods. And with that, we're going to start with our update, and I'm going to hand it over to Dolan to go over the pandemic update.
Thanks, Lee. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, members of the public and city staff. Dolan Beckel here, interim deputy city manager and serving as the Emergency Operations Center's Assistant Director. The Delta variant has dramatically impacted the COVID-19 landscape, and the situation is evolving very rapidly. I'll be sharing today what we currently do know about the Delta variant at the national, state, and local level. Keep in mind that the data and the insights on the data are changing daily, if not hourly, and due to the fact, as its name implies, it's a novel or new coronavirus, it remains very unpredictable. The evolution of this virus creates different variations or variants of the virus. There are variants of interest, and then there are more severe variants of concern. The dominant variant of concern we are monitoring is the Delta variant. What we do know about the Delta variant is that it, one, leads to increased transmission of the virus between individuals, resulting in more hospitalizations and death among unvaccinated individuals. Two, through rare, what we call breakthrough cases, vaccinated individuals can be infected, and they are largely experiencing mild to moderate symptoms, often unaware of the infection. Number three, individuals with the Delta variant are getting sick faster. And four, it is expected that at least 12 months, it will take at least 12 months to get to a return to normal state where COVID-19 can be treated in an approach and scale similar to that of chicken pox or measles. In terms of transmission, more younger people are getting infected by the Delta variant compared to earlier variants. Second, unvaccinated individuals are really driving the surge of the Delta variant today, and three, worse breakthrough cases remain a possibility. The daily number of new COVID-19 cases in the United States has reached high levels, second only to the pandemic peak during last winter of 2020. As such, the response in the United States to the COVID-19 pandemic has changed dramatically. The U.S. is again reporting the most cases globally at a seven-day moving average of 114,000 new cases daily, according to the CDC as of August 13th. Southern states are reporting the most worst outbreaks with high levels of community transmission across other parts of the country. In California, newly reported cases and risks for unvaccinated people are increasing. Across California counties, there are several counties with very high 14-day changes, up to 500%, such as Glen, Lassen, Sierra, and Calaveras Counties. Santa Clara County's 14-day change in new cases is up 44%. In Santa Clara County, as of August 12th, the seven-day rolling average was 268 new cases. Like the national trend, this number is second only to the pandemic peak during the winter of 2020. The relatively positive news is that unlike the start of the pandemic, thanks to the high percentages of overall vaccinations in both the county and the city, deaths due to COVID-19 are not trending upwards at the same pace as new cases. I do want to clarify the hospitalization message. Intensive Care Units, or ICU, availability beds in the county remain relatively high at this point, but the hospitalization rates are increasing. Right now, Santa Clara County hospitalization rate is much lower than the state, however, this situation could change quickly. Unfortunately, the high vaccination rate is not shared across all San Jose communities, and we will continue to focus on 13 priority areas that continue to experience low vaccination rates. I'll now turn the remainder of the presentation back to Lee, who will provide an update on the national, county, and city response to the Delta variant and continued vaccination efforts in priority census tracts.
Thank you, Dolan. Next slide. Next slide. So the team, we've done our best to summarize of all of the information at a federal level, state level, and local level regarding changes to policy and operations regarding the Delta variant, and we were updating this up until 15 minutes before we started with new information coming out from our president. So at a national level, a few weeks ago, the CDC did announce interim public health recommendations for fully vaccinated people, and just to go over a few of them, this includes fully vaccinated people wearing masks in public, indoor settings, and areas of substantial or high transmission, and that fully vaccinated people that may want to, may want to wear a mask regardless of the level of transmission, particularly if they have family members or in a household with someone with immunocompromised or high-risk health. Also recommending universal indoor masking for all teachers, staff, students, and visitors to school regardless of vaccination status. Last week, on August 12th, the Food and Drug Administration amended their emergency youth authorization for both the Pfizer and Moderna vaccines to allow for the use of additional doses in certain immunocompromised individuals, and we'll get to that a little bit later. Actually, can we stay on the national slide just quickly? And then today, and this is more internally focused for us, but today President Biden announced the continued support of COVID-19 response and recovery assistance by extending 100% federal funding to state, local, tribal, and territory governments through the end of the calendar year. And so, as we need additional resources and reimbursement to fund the recovery, we'll be able to do so through FEMA. Next slide. Not on this slide, because the update was given late last night, but last night Governor Newsom signed a new executive order at a state level that helped expand the state's healthcare workforce by allowing out-of-state workers to come as reinforcement. It also provides flexibilities to schools suffering from low staffing levels by allowing them to rehire retired teachers and staff and give flexibility for school operations. It also requires all schools, regardless of public or private, and state workers to either show proof of vaccination or be tested weekly to continue work. At a local level, the county has also announced a new public health order, including requirements to wear face masks, coverings indoors regardless of vaccination status, with a few exemptions that we've recovered, that we've gone over in various flash reports. Next slide. Also in that public health order, the county included recommendations urging businesses and government entities to follow four specific recommendations, and that includes implementing mandatory vaccinations for all personnel, subject to very limited exemptions, move operations outdoor where possible or feasible, prohibit personnel who have been, not been fully vaccinated from engaging in work-related travel to certain geographic areas in the United States and throughout the world, and requiring all personnel not fully vaccinated to obtain frequent testing. So, given the lay of the land, as I mentioned, we've started to reengage the county and some of our partners on what we need to do in the coming weeks and months related to the Delta variant, and so we're going to hop into some of those right now, and I'll go ahead and start with our vaccination efforts. Thank you. In terms of the city response, our Vaccination Task Force updated roadmap and work plan is to continue to focus on the city's role as primarily providing vaccination support to the county and healthcare providers. Through these partnerships with the county and other providers, the city has become the first major metropolitan large city to reach 85% of residents with at least one first dose. In addition, throughout the summer and through the remainder, throughout the remainder of the summer, continuing to partner with the county, Kaiser, Safeway, Aki, Bay Area, Community Health, the city, without the county's support, administered 25,000 vaccinations directly to our own residents. As mentioned, the Delta variant is causing a surge of COVID-19 cases locally, and the city is at a larger perspective, better protected place with over 85% of its population vaccinated, but there is still work to do as that vaccination rate is not equally distributed across the city. And so, our task force is going to continue to collaborate with the county and on providing and sharing information around data and census tracts and tactics around these census tracts that will continue to experience lower rates of vaccinations. The task force is currently working with our library staff, PR and S staff, Public Works, and other city departments to make facilities and parks readily available to the county for more mobile vaccination events in the coming weeks. In addition, we've instructed our CDBG recipients to continue to support outreach operations through flyering and knock-and-talk activities in the most under-vaccinated areas of our city. Currently, after discussions with the county, our Vaccination Task Force is also going to continue to provide the people power through temporary employees, which we've discussed as our vaccination champions. So with the emergency, the federal funding, 100% federal funding being continued through the end of the year, we can continue our vaccination champions and continue to support county efforts on these pop-up vaccination sites. We'll also be working with the county and other partners to develop a communication strategy that will focus on two important things, new emergence, but the first is on youth and parents, as pediatric vaccinations hopefully become available for 12 and younger in late September or October, and then also working with the county on the third dose, when and if that is available, and the Biden administration has started to signal, an announcement later this week around that. Next slide. With the help of the city's Vaccination Task Force, our community partners, the county, as well as the council offices, our countywide vaccination rates have increased substantially across our community since we last reported to you in June. The most dramatic increase is seen in our Black and Latino, Latina, and Latinx populations citywide. The vaccination dashboard shows overall resident vaccination rate of 85.7% of those that are 12 and over, which was up almost 7% from the last time we reported. However, I do want to state that the county has not updated the vaccination dashboard since late July, so some of these stats could be behind. Given the need to focus on those that are unvaccinated, and also with the disproportionate rates of vaccinations geographically throughout our city and racially, the team has focused on 13 census tracts for continued effort with the county and our partners. Next slide. All of the strategies planned through the Vaccination Task Force that you've heard and that we'll be hearing about in future meetings, it will focus on priority census tracts identified through the county data. These census tracts span across several council districts and throughout the city, and the team will continue to work to get vaccinations in arms while there is a need in these census tracts by supporting the larger county efforts and going over the items that I've already said. We intend to continue partnering directly with council offices who have these census tracts in their council districts, and we will be working with you hand-in-hand through the Vaccination Task Force on these efforts. I did want to point out, it has been, we've become aware that some of the county data and the reporting data specifically to Alviso might be incorrect, so we're working with the county to refresh that, so Alviso might fall off of this list, just as a footnote. Next slide. One of the areas we'll be talking to you about, because it has been shifting so much, is around kind of our hybrid work and our facilities and resources here. City Hall did reopen to the public on August 2nd. All employees and members of the public are required to wear masks, and employees are required to complete daily health screenings when entering City Hall. On August 10th, we made the decision to delay bringing back additional employees to facilities at this point, and we'll continue to monitor the situation and when it's appropriate to bring additional folks back. With that said, services that we currently have open to resident, or our community at City Hall, we intend to keep open. By August 23rd, all employees will be required to show proof of vaccination or submit weekly negative COVID tests, and we will be evaluating cases internally regarding exposures and risk levels to determine when we bring employees back, possibly targeting October 4th if possible. And finally, as shown on the slide, we are exploring requiring all employees to be vaccinated by September 30th. Next slide. To move on to our eviction and rental relief update, new state law requirements under AB 832 begin on October 1st. For rent due between October 2021 through March 2022, landlords can evict for unpaid rent during this period if they submitted a completed application, or if it was denied, or if 21 days has passed without a response from the rent relief program or the tenant that has applied. Residents can also, I'm sorry, landlords can also evict for non-payment for rent for new tenancies that begin on October 1st or later. Courts can reinstate tenancies prior to being evicted if the funds have been approved and is waiting reimbursement. This is what is driving the surge and the need to get as many people into the system as possible. Beyond the existing parameters set forth in AB 832, our city team continues to work as on many of the avenues as possible to pursue changes in law that would further extend the protection for our residents locally. This is being done while simultaneously enrolling individuals in the rental relief This is being done while simultaneously enrolling individuals in the rental relief program now. Our advocacy to find solutions that work best for San Jose residents is focused on both the state legislature and the governor's office. And housing staff is here for questions if we want to jump in. Next slide. And then lastly, to summarize a few different things before we end, we are actively monitoring food distribution sites and working with our partners. Really interesting tidbit that found fascinating, since the beginning of the pandemic, the city and its partners have distributed 180 million meals since March 2020. Kudos to our staff and our partners. Since the winter break, second harvest is down 15%, and senior nutrition programs and unhoused residential programs are currently stable with food. And students are now receiving universal meals through schools in almost all school districts throughout the county. We're currently renewing a number of our contracts with our partner to extend through the end of the calendar year and continue on a daily basis to monitor food insecurity levels within the EOC to see if changes are made. Within our digital equity program headed by the library and Office of Civic Innovation, all projects are progressing on schedule, and we're preparing for construction to start in the Independence Area this November. In addition, the city has submitted an application to the Emergency Connectivity Fund to the FCC, which expands the city's ability to provide connectivity for educational and learning purposes. Partnership with schools for hotspot distribution is providing almost 4,000 hotspots at the start of the year, and we can expand to over 6,000 through the funding through the Emergency Connectivity Fund if we receive it. In addition, the library continues to have limited availability, but disperse Chromebooks and iPads in hotspots where needed. Within childcare, our summer camps all ended last week and averaged about over 800 youth served weekly. PR and S will operate 31 after-school programs in the coming weeks, and recreational preschool begins at the end of the month with over 22 classes over 15 locations in the city. One of the things you'll be hearing about in future reports is our isolation and quarantine program. 90% of the people who have been used, have used this program are from San Jose, and kudos to Jackie and her team at the county. This program has been very robust and save a lot of widespread infections. The county has been proactive in reaching out to housing and the Emergency Operations Center about additional funding to continue the program with the, with the Delta variant locally. So we'll be working on that with them in the coming days. And then lastly, as we mentioned last week, Jim Shannon, our budget director, we are currently evaluating the community and economic recovery enterprise scope and budget that was passed in June to determine if additional resources are needed for recovery, or if we need to stretch out the time, I'm sorry, for response and stretch out the budget a little bit. Next slide. So that ends our presentation. We have staff from various city departments and the EOC available for any questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Lee. Okay, I know we're going to have many questions. Let's go first to the public.
Right, hello, yes, oh, two minutes. Oh, I'm so proud of you. Thank you so much. Yeah, because we need the public to be heard, you know, and that, I really appreciate two minutes. And on top of it, to hear how badly we are back in the COVID is because we never really changed, and that's the problem, that the climate crisis is what we've been ignoring, and that's what brought us COVID. It's flying on airplanes, traveling all around, and then we have now, you know, COVID is here, and we're having to deal with it, and we never really built our resiliency, our mitigations that, you know, create resiliency in our community, for real, no BS. And the thing is, is that, you know, we, that's why we cannot have our politicians be, be leading us, because you see that we're still in the crisis. Now we're still in the COVID crisis, because we really never made the changes. And we need the, our charter, that's where we need to make the changes, is at the, in the charter, not our politicians, like Hank Paulson said, those who make money and have their salary, and also other people have said it, make their salary, they can never see the problem. And that's, we see it over and over, that our politicians are being supported by the fossil fuel industry. We saw it with Deb Davis right now, with Bloom, her support with Bloom Energy. They're a fossil, they are not clean, they are, they are dirty, they are, they are fossil fuel, and yet we're not making the changes. And so we need it in our, in our charter, the changes that bring us to zero, and that we, that's what we need, and we need it right away, because we are so much in the, the jaws of destruction as we, you know, what's happening in California. Like Mayor, like Governor Newsom said, if you don't believe in the science, see it with your eyes. Look at the destruction of all of our economics. So what we need is a, another type of economy that's a caring economy, and it is about growing food. And that's why I want you to buy the land at 615 Stockton Avenue to grow food as a demonstration.
Hi, thank you. Blair Beekman here. To simply once again try to pass along and try to make clear, is my understanding that county eviction moratoriums can supersede California state law and may actually last 90 days after the date of December 31st, 2021. This would be March 2022 for Alameda County and Santa Clara County. Housing Director Jackie Morales-Franz and San Jose City Government can possibly set good local precedent for the entire state and for local tenants not to be sued after certain parts of the state of California eviction moratorium expires September 30th, 2021. A reminder that apartment landowners should be mostly guaranteed their money through newly-formed California State Subsidy Program. Please consider how this can help neighborhood community peace and harmony and that people don't get hurt. I thank you for these decent, good efforts by San Jose City Government. To also remind, city government and city council has the power to create emergency measures and can call a special council meeting at the time of September 30th to possibly override certain portions of the California State Moratorium law, so tenants do not have to be sued by owners at that time. Thank you. There's actually a lot of community projects that are hopeful for the next decade and that can invite all parts of the community, including the ideas of reimagine equity, tenants, and owners' rights, workers' rights, Medicare for All, open public policies, and more open accountable practices of community democracy. Again, these are universal, good human ideals that can invite all parts of the community and that I feel can help ask important questions that can address the issues of violence at this time. That's a good report. Now, with 15 seconds, how could we ask our local government to learn how to be more open and accountable with our public? And how can the public learn to trust government more? You know there's practices to do this, please, let's be working.
Paul Soto?
Yes, Paul Soto from the horseshoe. First of all, I want to thank, I want to thank Lee for a comprehensive, very honest, very direct assessment of what we're going to be dealing with right now. What we can look forward to dealing with from what I surmised was the next 12 months. And if I understand you correctly, I'd like some clarification, I'm sure I'll get this from the council, is that this is the same thing that we were confronted with last year. It's going to be the same policies, you can see the trajectory. And so if the, if the racist inequities surfaced back then, do you think that this city will be able to tolerate another confrontation with just how much neglect has happened generationally in the city? That is a question that needs to be answered, because from what I, from what I gathered from this report, is we're going to have a recontinuation of what happened last year, but we can't necessarily predict exactly what that is. Okay? And so the restaurants wasn't touched, okay? Because the restaurants are a primary source by which this, this variant is transferred. These gatherings that you had, San Jose Jazz Festival, what do you think was going on? That was a breeding ground. That was a breeding ground. You've opened up downtown, you, have you been downtown at midnight, 1:00 in the morning? Have you seen the kind of interaction? Okay, so if we're going to start accepting some responsibility for what's going on in the city, that's fine. You know, and I think the organizations that back then and now are going to step up and, and do the work to supplant the inadequacies of this council. That is what gets me the most, is that you guys know what the truth is, but you don't, you speak your.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I want to talk a little bit about, because the current system is just not working. It's not working for tenants, and it's not working for landlords. And landlords are being forced to evict tenants because financially they don't, they don't have a choice. And these tenants in turn have got nowhere to go, and we got to be realistic. In three months from now, we will be looking at the winter, and we'll know what's going to happen next. Now, adding insult to injury, what I'm seeing in my own street is that after these homes are being vacated, they are not going back to the rental pool in San Jose. So in closing, I would like you to consider a different approach. Is that the city would use emergency relief funds to make landlords whole, and in other words, keeping tenants where they currently located. And subsequently, the city would then become responsible for collecting or recovering, as you want to call it, unpaid rents from tenants at a later date to wage garnishing or some other methods. You know how that works. Thank you.
Back to council.
Thank you. Beg indulgence of my colleagues, I wanted to just jump in with some questions of my own, because I'm really particularly concerned about the implications of the preemption of any local regulations on eviction moratoria. They're inherent in AB 3088 and the challenges we have. And I know that our intergovernmental affairs team and Nora's team are working hard on seeing if there might be some third way for us to find other bases for eviction moratoria beyond, they're not based on the pandemic itself, but I can't help but think we're facing a real tsunami here of need if we're not able to find a solution. And certainly I'll be pushing and advocating in Sacramento, though I'm told by some knowledgeable folks that that is going to be a very, very heavy lift, given all the challenges they had negotiating something. So I just wanted to focus on our own process, because I understand that what we know is an unlawful detainer cannot be filed unless the landlord has applied. And if the landlord gets a denial, then they can go ahead and move forward, or if they don't get any response in 20 days, is that right, to their application, then they can go ahead and file the unlawful detainer?
Thanks for the question, Mayor Ricardo, in regards to the inadequacies around existing protections. We have two individuals available to answer questions. Either Jackie Morales can respond to them, or if they're pertaining to the legality around the existing bill, Chris Alexander's on the Zoom call.
Great. Whoever wants to jump in on that first one would be great. Jackie, I'll be coming with a couple of questions to you in just a moment. But whoever wants to jump in on that one.
I can answer that question. So, yes, state law does require, starting in October through March, covering six-month period of rent, that a landlord apply before they file an eviction, and they must be denied in order to proceed, or they have to wait 20 days without a response from either the tenant or from the rental assistance program. In either of those scenarios, the landlord can proceed with the eviction, and a summons would be issued so that they can serve the tenant at that point.
Right. Thank you. So, so just to be clear, what, trying to understand what the definition of response is. Is response only at an approval or denial, or can it be a letter that says, hey, we're working on it and we'll get back to you?
It isn't specific about what type of response needs to be provided to the landlord. So it, it could be that there is a pending application that is going through the approval process, or from the tenant that they could assert that they have actually applied for rental assistance and they're awaiting a response. So either scenario, that should satisfy the requirements under state law to prevent proceeding with an eviction.
As part of the process, the law does require that the, whoever is administering the funds provide access into their system so that the landlord can check the status of the application and the courts can check the status of the applications. And so there is a formal requirement in the law in order to get that access so that the verifications can be done.
So Jackie, could we just prevent the filing of unlawful detainers by sending emails and letters to all these landlords saying, we're still working on it? Is that sufficient, or do we need?
Well, no, because actually the law also states that within 20, well, if the person has actually filed, right, you could say something, but the, there is a requirement in one of those that you have to have had a complete application. That definition of what a complete application is, is what's an unknown. So we're still working on it, probably isn't, isn't going to potentially work.
That doesn't constitute a response for purposes of?
Now, on the first option, it does, where you have to have a response that says you've, the application has already gone through the complete system. So there is one path where that one is, you have to get a response. But there is another path that a landlord can take, where they have the 20 days in which to receive the response from the system, that the, the tenant has actually filed a completed application, so it's actually in the system, and it's being worked on. But, you know, that one's a little more detailed in terms of all the steps that they have to file.
Okay.
And have to go through.
I have a feeling I'm not asking.
Clarify?
Yeah, I, let me, let me just see if I can refine the question a little bit, because I have a feeling I'm not asking it in a way that's, that's, that's getting to the point I think that I'm trying to understand, which is, I understand that delay in responding to these applications is not our friend, right? We don't want delay because that 20 days expires, that could be an eviction for one of our families. And can we, can we simply, can we satisfy that response requirement simply by telling the landlord, we're working on it? Or do we actually have to have an approval or denial as that, to be that response?
Not within the 20 days. Within the 20 days, you don't have to have an approval or denial, you just have to have a completed application in the system, of which either the court or the, probably at that point, the court can look to see that the system is in fact shooting out, yes, the tenant has a completed application on file.
In terms of our processing, I know that there are different bottlenecks right now, and we had a real staffing shortage in terms of review of, and approval of the applications. And I know you're, you're trying to shift a lot of temporary staff from the vaccine support teams over to this one, and I think that's completely appropriate. And I know you're resigning housing staff. Can you take staff from mayor and council offices to help as well?
Sure. We are in the process of making a request to the EOC to see if we can redeploy more city staff, which would include those staff to help with the effort.
Okay, great. Just let us know, because I think this is certainly top of mind for all of us, trying to avoid this eviction tsunami, and the more of these payments we can get processed, the better. So I understand there's, there's one challenge just in terms of the approvals. I also see that, and I'm looking at the state program and the local program, I'm not sure, I know these aren't exact parallels, but the state program, I guess, 24 million's been approved, only 11 million paid. I, I know these aren't exact parallels, but the state program, I guess 24 million's been approved, only 11 million paid. Uh, this is as of, I think, August 10th. So I appreciate your teams getting us this data. It looks like there's also a significant difference between approval and what's been paid at the local program as well. Can you help me understand what that bottleneck is about?
Sure. So part of the bottleneck is our program is reaching out to the most vulnerable, under 30% of the area median income. And what we have found is that has, tends to be the most challenging cases. So actually, when you look at what the requirements are, it's a one-page sheet. You have to submit like five documentation. However, because of who we're working with, we have issues around um, the types of employment people have. So they might have cash instead of just like a standard pay stub, which would have been the simplest thing to submit. They may have had irregular employment, which then becomes uh, documentation challenges. They may not be on the lease. They may be a sub leasing. So there, the population has documentation challenges that requires uh, more work in order to satisfy the requirements. We have language barriers-
Jackie, I'm sorry. Let me, let me just rephrase because what we're really going to isn't, isn't the review point. I understand we have challenges there. That's a lot of work. But now I'm going to, once their application's been approved, it seems as though there's a gap, a significant gap between the dollars of approved applications and what's actually been paid.
Yeah, Sam, I'm wondering if you're looking at the same number that I was, because I, the, the gap that I'm seeing is there's a nu- uh, numbers in the system that are actually waiting to be approved. That's where we're seeing a gap. So there's a gap of getting a completed application into the system.
Right.
And then there's a gap of having somebody go through and actually approve it. There's not actually much of a gap. Once the application is fully approved, it pretty much is going to get a check issued. Oh, and there's one more step. We have to make sure after the approval period that there's not a duplication. So that the applicant has not applied to the state program and that can take time as well. So those are the three different steps in the process.
Okay.
That have delays and lags.
Right. Okay. So we think, at least in our local program, we don't think there's a significant lag at that stage. We think that the, where we're focused on is the, is the approval and review.
It's, the lag is coming because we have to check for duplication.
Right. On the state level, there is a significant gap. 24 million approved, 11 million paid in San Jose. Similar gap at the county and the state program. Do we have any idea what is, what to attribute that gap to?
That gap is harder for us to understand because the state has not been as transparent in terms of sharing information with us regarding uh, where they're seeing their gaps.
Okay. Can, if I can help in some way, I'm happy to follow up uh, with the right departments. Because I'm very concerned about that gap as well. And then just a question about the roadmap that we've got. Um, thank you, Jackie. Thank you for all that information. If we can go back to that uh, slide with the roadmap and we have, is at the very beginning of the presentation. Describes all the-
This is slide five.
All the work that we're doing here in the organization. Now, what you see is, as has been the case, two different colors to indicate what's essentially EOC work and what's, I think it's slide five?
Yep.
Yeah. There it is. Two different colors here to describe what are enterprise priorities and then what are essentially EOC priorities. And given what we're increasingly learning about this virus and that this is going to be with us for quite a while, at least a couple of years. Is it time, I, I understand we need to differentiate when we're looking for FEMA reimbursement and all that. But is it time for us to just say there's, we don't need a two-tone map? This is just what we're all doing as a city because pandemic is going to be with us and it's going to be integrated as part of our work?
Yeah, so I'll take a stab at that. I, I think that's a great question and, and the answer is probably yes. I, I think we used this as a planning tool for the administration and the council in June when we were um, integrating both efforts. Um, and I would say there's a very specific reason, reason why we've activated the EOC this way, this time. Because towards the end of last year, we had two large competing organizations. And I think we're going to try and do everything to integrate um, items on this roadmap, whether it's response, recovery, or anything else. You know, collectively together. So I, I think we can kind of shift. I think we will also be coming back to have a roadmap, roadmap conversation and resource conversation around some of the external funding and internal funding that we've put towards this. And so we can make those changes and have that conversation. But I, I think it's an excellent idea.
I appreciate why you need for bookkeeping purposes to keep things separate because you're talking to FEMA every day and um, you're also trying to figure out what federal money you can use and what you can't. But I appreciate the response. And then finally, it seems as though in the last week or two, we are actually seeing significant rise in hospitalizations in the county based on the state website. We thought we might be able to get through this with rising cases, but without the hospitalization. Are we learning anything from the county about what they expect with regard to that hospitalization trend? I know obviously there are parts even of this state where they're triaging patients again.
Yeah, so interim deputy city manager, Mayor, that's a good question. So as I said, what's happening in Santa Clara and what's happening at the state are a little different in terms of availability. But I think the trend that we're just lagging in, in the trend right now. So at, at peak, Santa Clara County had just a little over 200 ICU beds available, period. Right now, we've got about 105. The low was 20. So we're, and, and actually the, the trend of ICU bed availability in Santa Clara currently is trending upwards. But if you just look at the fact that Santa Clara County is not an island and City of San Jose is not an island, sooner or later, we're going to see the ICU bed availability start to shrink here as well. Which is why Governor, I think Governor Newsom yesterday was very appropriate to begin to find ways to shift resources both to the schools as well as to the, the healthcare workers. In terms of what, you know, we'll have to get, we're coordinating with the county. I think our next check-in, we can ask them that question in terms of what actions they may be taking to get us um, more ICU bed availability. Right now, we're about 105 and our peak was 200.
Yeah. Thanks, Dolan. Uh, thank you for responding to all those questions with all the information you guys have. Councilmember Sparsen?
Thank you, Mayor. No, those were great questions. Um, I really appreciated it. And um, actually, uh, if housing could send, I know some of us have gotten the information on the rental assistance numbers, the latest ones. I think it might be helpful for all of our colleagues to have um, the information around uh, applications in process, those approved and the number paid. I know um, we had some specific questions, um, so we got it. But I think it's important um, for everyone to have the latest information. I, and I missed something really quick, so sorry Jackie, if you're going back and forth. But so, for example, um, on the amounts, on the state funds, so for example, City of San Jose, 43.1 million requested, 24 million approved, 11 million paid. Actually wanted to follow up on the mayor's question around how long is it taking for landlords to get paid after that? Because that's um, less than half, right? So do we know, oh, thanks Reagan, sorry. So do we know what those issues are? How long it's taking landlords to get paid? Because I think if we were able to be more clear with them, it might save some folks from getting evicted, particularly from the smaller landlords who aren't able to absorb, uh, they're just kind of reached the end of their rope.
Hi, Councilmember Reagan with the Housing Department. Uh, we just had a call with the state last week about their program and our program. And they said their goal for payment from submittal to actual check received, payment is 30 days.
Okay.
Did you have a second part to your question?
Yeah, and how long is the, is our, the local program? Because we're a lot faster, aren't we? Although um, I noticed we, we, we don't seem to have the lag on the local side, but we're still behind in the approval process, which you just, we just got an explanation of.
That's right. We're, we're, we're not, we're a little bit faster, but not much. Um, and we're between 20 and 30 days. But this is data from um, before we've made a, a bunch of recent system improvements. So over the last two weeks, we have um, activated county disaster service workers, about 60 of them, to help with that application review, processing and approval. We've added capacity and are paying for more capacity with some of our grassroots partners. And then we um, have city workers that we're adding capacity. So we're hoping to speed that time up even more.
So when um, the tenant gets their letter that says, congrats, you've been approved, do, is there a commitment in that letter in terms of when payment will go through? I, I'm just thinking from the landlord perspective to prevent those evictions.
There is, but I, I don't know the exact, if we commit in that to an exact time.
Okay, and I'm happy, as that process is refined, I'm happy to help and try and get the word out as much as possible. I think um, you know, and I've heard from some landlords and they're like, fine, I can absorb it. It's like, you know, some landlords have been really great and they're large enough where they have been able to absorb. Others have been increasing rents throughout the pandemic. And then others, particularly the smaller ones, aren't able to absorb it. And they're just kind of trying to figure out what the next steps. And maybe with that subgroup, this might be more helpful. We can target them to say, just hang in there a little bit longer. And, and again, I'm happy to help with that. And the other thing I wanted to bring up on terms of the um, approval process or the application process. Um, I'm assuming that it's not just non-traditional employment. Um, I've heard out in the community that it's non-traditional living situations, right? It's multiple families sharing in one apartment, a one-bedroom apartment or somebody renting a garage. And so are we able to work through that issue on both the local and the state side? Or I know we're focused more on the local side for that.
Yeah, we're definitely able to work through those non-traditional lease agreements, as we call them, on the local program. That's one of the reasons why we wanted to have a local program. But as Jackie was saying, it just takes a little bit more time and intensive work with those households to make sure we have as best of documentation as we can. And if not, then we do allow um, self testimony, written signed testimony um, as verification. But again, it just takes a little bit of more intensive work with households.
Thank you. And um, lastly, I just wanted to thank you for your partnership with Franklin McKinley. The Housing Department spent the month of July really um, working on laying that foundation, working on the agreement. At the same time, I'm, I've had a lot of events out in my community all summer long. And the Housing Department has consistently been there with the flyers and different languages, trying to reach as many of the folks as possible. And so I really wanted to acknowledge that hard work. And thank, thank everybody because it really has made a huge difference at every single one of my events, which is some of the hardest hit areas, both in terms of COVID, but also economically. People have taken away flyers. They have shared them. They have, um, it has helped. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. It's been a busy summer. If I could just put in a free plug to you all. If there are events that you're having that you would like us to be there. Or alternatively, if you would like us to have a pop-up rental assistance event in your district, at your library or your community center, we'd be happy to do that. We come in with iPads all equipped to help people complete applications right there on the spot. So I'm already working with some of your offices, but I'm happy to do more. So you all know how to get ahold of me.
Thank you.
Thanks for the plug.
And then I had um, a question um, about the meals. So those contracts will go through 2021. And um, so I had a question on how we're looking at moving or expanding sites. Um, I know I've been talking with the food bank for a really long time now about a food desert in West Evergreen that frankly needs more support. It's a very, very low-income area. And so I just kind of, and we've talked about, the food bank is sort of rearranging their organization and wanted to see how we're going to move forward to have, retain the flexibility to respond as some areas may be able to get back on their feet and other areas may not.
Yeah, good question, Councilmember Dolan Buckle again. So are we, um, I think what, what best to do is we'll bring that area back to John Cicirelli in PRNS and talk about that particular area without second harvest specifically on, on the call. I, I can't answer specifically where they are with that location. I do know like the city and a lot of businesses, they're struggling with staffing. So that could be some of the constraints that they're working with. But we'll take that back. In terms of the, the flexibility, what we're really focused on right now is the winter with the universal meals and every student in school finally getting breakfast and lunch if they need it. Uh, I think we're really concerned about what's going to happen over Thanksgiving and the winter holiday, the Thanksgiving holiday, the winter holiday. And suddenly not having 66% of your meals, you know, for your fam, for your kids supplied. So we're considering um, either existing contracts or potentially getting out to an RFP. So we have that all in place so we can respond, kind of like we did last year, with increased investments in the community-based organizations, in, in the schools and wherever we need to, to basically ramp that back up. I meet with um, the Dr. Dewan, the County Office of Education Superintendent. And we agree that's the big concern right now, especially with kids, is going to be the winter. So uh, I know John Cicirelli and CJ Ryan and Jill Mari are, are already working on that winter plan now to get ahead of it. Kind of some lessons learned from last year is not to wait till October. So they're working on that winter plan right now and we can come back to you, you know, with a report at the next time we come back to council.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I, and to see if the school districts would like to apply for that RFP. I know in Franklin McKinley, there was definitely a hybrid. So Catholic Charities was pitching in and the school district was pitching in. And going through the, keeping that existing system going was um, the way to go. And so I agree with that. And by the way, 180 million meals is something I think we should talk more about. I think um, as people have been working from their living rooms, one of the things that has happened out of COVID is there are a lot of folks that are unaware of the tragedies that are, and the crises that are happening in other parts of the city outside their home. And 180 meals is a, is a huge accomplishment. At the same time, it's really tragic that this is happening here in Silicon Valley and that hunger has not really abated. And the fact that we're planning to continue and ramp up for winter tells us that we as a community have a lot longer to go. I had a last question around the isolation and quarantine. So the city has 90%. Does that include, because we're transitioning people from home first, right? Because they kind of, sort of contracted because of the um, number of folks they were able to serve in, in uh, COVID with COVID requirements and social distancing? Or is that a combination of that and folks living in overcrowded living situations in San Jose?
You started looking at me, but I was going to call a friend.
You started looking at me, but I was going to call a friend.
I know, I'm looking at Jackie, I'm looking at you.
That's a great question, but yeah, we need Jackie.
So the way the county is administering the program or implementing it, anyone that gets tested positive COVID, they do offer the service too. And so what they report back to me is that 90% of the people actually take advantage of all the services. So whether it's the hotel stays or services that are provided within their own home. So that, as well as the rental assistance. Overall, 90% of it is going to San Jose residents. But they haven't specifically made any kind of connection on why they think that is. But it is significantly San Jose residents. Thank you. That's an incredible statistic, 90%. And one of the things, as COVID continues and the transmission rate is so much higher, fortunately, and I hope the trend continues, knock on wood, that hospital, it doesn't require hospitalization and that people don't have to die if they get COVID. They're still out of work, right, for at least a couple of weeks. And so we will keep that isolation and quarantine support for the duration. We'll just pay our portion of it to the county. Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct. That is the request from the county to continue to provide all three of those services, isolation, hotel rooms, services directly to the home, and rental assistance.
Thank you. This is another amazing program that has saved lives, so thank you. That's it for me. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mahan?
Thanks, Mayor, and I'll be very brief. I think you and Councilmember Sparza already covered the issue I really want to dig into, which was the potential looming eviction cliff here and what we're doing on distribution of rent relief funds. So I think, I think we've covered it pretty well. I appreciate Councilmember Sparza requesting the data that it sounds like some council members may have, but I certainly haven't seen. I'd love to take a look at. And I guess just in general, for these updates, it would be helpful to have greater visibility into how we're doing and what our options are for accelerating the distribution of rent relief funds. Because I just, this seems like maybe the most potentially catastrophic risk out on the horizon. So I think you all covered the questions well already, but I'll just add my voice on the importance of that issue. Thanks.
Yeah, and we will send out all the information to the mayor and council. And we also, the housing team and, and city manager's team are working on an info memo now. So we'll address the questions that were raised today and especially the possible support from mayor and council and getting some of the applications through.
Great, thank you.
And appreciate that. I, I think everyone's hearing the same signal from Sacramento, that there seems to be very little appetite to change or amend what's there at AB 3088. I don't think that condemns us to keeping our mouth shut. So we will be exploring opportunities to be very vocal on that issue. I know other cities will as well. Okay, any other comments? Councilmember Crossco?
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to thank staff for all the work that you've been doing over the past year, year and a half. I, I wanted to, and thank you, Lee, for the report. Could we turn to page 17 of the, of the presentation? So, I mean, I'm, I'm glad that these numbers are going up. I wish they were going up a little bit more in some of our communities that are, are still woefully behind. I, I just have a question about the Asian number. 99-plus percent are vaccinated?
That is correct. We double-checked that with the county three times, and that is the number they're reporting out.
99? So basically 100%?
That is correct.
Of our Vietnamese community is vaccinated?
That's what the county dashboard says, yes.
I think that's amazing, if that's true. I'd love to see how that actual, the raw numbers breaks down. Because I've never seen anything to be 100%.
Yeah.
In any of the reports that we've ever seen, other than sheer desperation and fear during the pandemic, I think all of us were.
I think, you know, as I mentioned, the, the county's dashboard hasn't been updated, I think since July 17th, if, if memory serves. And so they are dealing with a data issue and plan to update it later this week or not. We've, we have several questions in, the question around Alviso and how that's been reported out, as well as this statistic as well. Because if you do look at some of the census tracts that we reported out that are the least vaccinated in our city, some of those census tracts have large Vietnamese populations. So it, it doesn't necessarily, it's not necessarily consistent with us. And I think we're going to be pushing on this quite a bit. You know, we didn't go into it in the presentation, but you know what the city, the county, and a number of partners in your offices did, you know, winter through spring in the way of the vaccination effort. It is really similar to a get-out-the-vote campaign, quite frankly. Remove every single hurdle for that person to get a vaccination. And as we go to a much more focused campaign around vaccination, hesitancy, that the, the strategies need to change quite considerably. I think the people that really have wanted to get vaccinated, we've, we've done and we've removed the barriers. So we're trying to get as much data as we can to then use the behavioral insights work that we've done, work with you guys directly to understand what may convince some of the individuals in those specific census tracts to change their opinion. Because the, this campaign and what we're working on with the county now is, is going to change from, from a get-out-the-vote type strategy to one of changing opinion. And we'll want to keep that up, especially with 12 and under hopefully being available soon, which is a huge portion of our population that can better protect, obviously, the, the children in our community, but also the entire community on getting those numbers up. So we're going to be getting into these numbers in a very detailed manner with the county council member.
Thank you. I, I, again, I, I'd like to dig a little bit deeper. I do think that there's some lessons learned, regardless of whether we're at 99-plus percent with the Asian community. You know, at the very beginning of the pandemic, there was conversations about, you know, the similarities between the Latino community, the Asian community, the, this lack of trust with government. And as we're seeing, the Asian community came out and they fully accepted the vaccine and making sure that they were protected. And I do think that there's some lessons learned. I don't know what the motivation was, other than what I think my motivation is, and maybe it's similar, which is I want to be healthy. I want to be able to move around and, and, and protect those around me. But I think that there's more than that. What is it that drove them there? What, what got them there at such a high rate? And I'd like to be able to see that and examine that and, and be able to take those lessons learned for whatever may come our way, whether it's the booster shot or another pandemic, God forbid. But, but I do think that there is a, a great value in, in digging a little deeper when we can catch our breath, I think. Right now, my focus is really to figure out how I get those four D5 census tracts above 60%, which is, you know, very disheartening, I might add. Because I do know the effort that has gone in. And I think really finding where people are, not just a census tract, but finding out where folks are, instead of just knocking haphazardly at every block or every door. I think we need to drill in, like you said, it's a different campaign. So you can't canvas it. You have to go directly to the person that on your PDI form said that they haven't voted yet, right? That they haven't sent in their ballot. And I, and I don't know if we have that kind of information to get into that kind of detail.
Yeah, you know, I don't know what type of data we have at that level. And that's part of what we'll be exploring with the county and the Vaccination Task Force. But I, I definitely would agree with you. This is, as much as the, the walk and talks have been successful. I mean, you know, your, your council office, the vaccination campaign, when you look at some of those census tracts in your district, the, the efforts over the last few months have improved the numbers quite a bit. But absolutely agree with you, this is probably not walk and talks anymore. It's going to be different. And, you know, just, I made a note when Reagan was speaking. You know, and I was able to go to one of council members of Sparza's event. How do we have these events where it's, it's not just vaccination, but the rental assistance? We've got to find other ways to pull them in so that we can get the shots in arms. But there's a heavy, heavy level of convincing that needs to be done. And agree with you, the, the more data that we have to kind of figure out the what and the why that is, the better we will be able to do.
And again, we're talking about now booster shots, what, eight months after the, the final shot, the final vaccine, now we're, you know, we're starting all over again pretty soon. So, and, and that's going to be a concern when we go back into these communities. Thank you so much. You know, I really liked hearing the update. And I am concerned about the avalanche that you're talking about, the tsunami that we're going to be seeing in terms of evictions. You know, again, I, I think if we could dig a little deeper into the Asian community and understand how we got there, I think it also allows us greater information to, to figure out how to get even deeper into the Latino community, whom I think is going to be facing a lot of these challenges, whether it's language barriers, comprehension, or even just knowledge of the, of the rental assistance and what they can do. We're going to have to really wrap our, our arms around these communities and make sure that we're not dealing with, with a whole other crises on our hands. But it's, but it's looming. Well, on that note, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Renes?
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a question about the, the champions that are going to continue to be assigned until December. I said this before, because I, I said, you know, can, we can't just have this, these folks on lend and not drive what those efforts should be like. And I think we have enough information here to be able to ask them to focus their efforts in the Black, Latino, and white community. And so I'm looking at you, Lee, a bit, and I know you're not responsible, you're just the one doing the presentation. Ultimately, what can we do to make sure that we pivot these champions in the way that I think, you know, when Jackie came down and she talked about some of the issues or gaps that rental assistants saw, one of that, one of those delays is just the difficulty of connecting with those folks. And so the, the, I think from NSC, from our Neighborhood Services Committee, I saw that the rate of the people that they connected with in terms of people of color was really high. And so I think, you know, we should also take a look at what our own departments are doing that is working, and that we recognize that connecting with underrepresented communities is just going to take longer, it's going to take more effort and resource. But if we invest in it in the right way, we'll get the results that we want. So for me, how, how can we, how can we direct some of these champions to, to continue to assist us with, with the gaps that we see?
Thank you, council member. You know, at least I will say, in our initial conversations with the county on what they are going to need around pediatric vaccinations, as well as the booster. You know, originally, we had reported out, and, and we had heard in the media that a large portion of pediatric vaccinations would be helping through healthcare providers or community clinics, so that there was a doctor there. The longer the approval gets, I would say, our county is much more worried about how fast we can move for our 11 and under, which, having two of that age, absolutely agree. So I, I will say, at least in those discussions, our ability to keep the vaccination champions with President Biden's, continuing with 100% federal funding through the end of the year is a huge opportunity for us. And I think they'll be put to work close to 100%. And since those have been on board, I would say the county has been extremely willing to accept ideas around the pop-up sites where those folks are staffed, whether they're special events, which clinics they're at. And so I think that partnership, at least how we've gone through kind of the end of spring into summer with that collaboration, I would think we want to kind of kick that into a higher gear and also see if we can hire additional. Because now with 100% funding, federal funding, we don't have a constraint other than us needing to kind of staff the administrative part of it. So I, I, I think they'll be spent 100% of the time on vaccinations. But do hear your point about kind of lessons learned and how we take that approach into other areas of this response and the recovery as well.
Yeah, that's part of the problem, that the county is just going to continue to move on. And then these underrepresented communities are going to fall even further behind, which is something that we had talked about, or I think some of us had discussed in previous COVID updates. And this just tells me that, that this indeed will continue to happen to the people of color who are left behind. So it's great that they're being open to the suggestions. I think we should really make it concrete agreements that when, whenever Jackie's department has a pop-up, that a vaccination pop-up should go right along with it, right? I, I will be honest, I'm not that worried about the children, because there's a school system where the system hosts them and monitors them and can support them. These other families are typically not connected to an agency in their community, and so, which is part of the problem. So I really want to stress to you that any of the new resources, such as, I think you said there was going to be city workers helping, grassroots partners adding capacity. Oh, no, wait, this is, this is where the, this is for the rental assistance. Maybe, and maybe this is some of the, those strategies that we need to use, is get some of our city workers, continue to enhance capacity within those service providers that render services to Latino and Black community. I, I'm not, I'm not sure why we are allowing for this gap to get further and further, you know, just to get larger over time. So what, we need to take a stand now and make sure that we close it. The other item is, and Jackie, this is a question I, we had talked about a bit in preparation for Neighborhood Services Committee. I know that you've been working really closely with McKinney-Vento folks, which is the program that, under the Santa Clara County Office of Education, supports homeless children in the school district in this county. So I, I think that the other way that, you know, as you are looking at some of the strategies that work and don't work, it seems like you're, you're successful, certainly, in, in reaching people of color, is there's just a little bit of a gap, because there's, it's, it takes a lot more effort to get them moving through the system. So I wonder if, if with McKinney-Vento, you've established any real formal process, referral process? Because I would think that many of those children that they've already identified would, their parents would be eligible. You're getting your steps in today, Jackie. And I know that our, our teams are set up for discussion. I just wonder if this is part of any of the future strategies?
Sure. So we have really been brainstorming with the county regarding what other systems exist that we have yet to talk to. And so we did talk about the McKinney-Vento. And by definition, because they were claiming themselves as homeless, they wouldn't probably qualify for our rental assistance, because they wouldn't.
Have a home, too.
They're couch surfing or doing something else. However, so the county has been working with the Office of Education on our whole outreach plan, on how to get even more information into the system. And then I've been, I have a meeting with someone from the school district about one of the elementary or pre-K programs to talk to them about. of the elementary or pre-K programs, to talk to them about how we can push information through them as well. So the schools are a place where we feel like we can do a better job in pushing out information, and then hopefully getting some of our pop-ups into the areas as well, I think is another critical step. Because what we know is that there's also the lag between when we tell people about it versus let's apply. And so we really want to put more effort into let's be there so that you can apply as our number one priority. But we are still trying to just push out as much information as possible. And so I noticed in your, your halls have been sending out emails to your constituents, and that would be the other plug, if we could make sure that the rental assistance between now and the end of September is part of those emails, we would really appreciate that. And we do have the information in Spanish and Vietnamese as well that can be pushed out.
Thank you, Jackie.
Perfect. Is that my time?
Sorry, Councilmember, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Yeah, no, no, I, I was, I was wondering if my 10 minutes had gone up. It really, you know, the two areas that we continue to talk about in terms of, of need are people of color. And the system has recognized the needs of, of some and maybe potentially overlooked the ones who are most difficult to connect with. And I think we have part of the answer within our own departments who are doing the work, our PR and S departments who are doing the work. And we just need to make sure that we leverage those folks as resources, because I'm not confident that, at this point, moving forward and looking to focus resources in terms of the county looking at children, I don't know how, how they're going to close that gap. That's concerning.
Thank you. Councilmember Cohen?
Yes, I just was looking at the data as well as others were. You know, it, I'm skeptical when I see numbers as high as they were, but, and I saw a presentation yesterday from the county school board, uh, county Department of Education, noticed that they said that in Los Altos, Palo Alto, Mountain View, 99.7% of 12 to 17-year-olds have been vaccinated. I, I doubted that as well. So I know that the, the way that they're measuring data is clearly not, not very accurate. In fact, when I was looking at the dashboard today about, that said Asian residents, I saw that it said, actually, there have been given out 587,000 vaccines to Asian residents out of 580,000 total Asian residents. So actually, it's like 110% or something. So clearly, there's not, you know, they're not really knowing how to measure the numbers. So I would, I wouldn't put a lot of stock in the actual percentages. Clearly, the trends are reasonable. But you can, you can use our anecdote about Alviso as a good example about how they're making mistakes here, and I want people to understand, they, they don't really know how to necessarily locate where all the vaccines are going. They're using total numbers of vaccine doses given out in the city and in the county, and then just kind of trying to figure out where they've gone later. For example, in Alviso, because many of the residents there are using PO boxes and don't necessarily have home mailboxes, they're not counting many of the residents as Alviso residents when they get their doses. And so, we knew that there were very few people in Alviso getting vaccines, and we spent a lot of time in our office going door-to-door recruiting people, doing vaccine clinics, and the number wasn't going up. It was 35%, and we'd get a new report, it would still say 35%, and we'd say, what's going on? We're giving out hundreds of doses in Alviso. And we kept saying, this number is, shouldn't still be 40%. We finally have, have shown that the number is actually closer to 70 or 80% in Alviso, but the report still says 40%. And that's because the PO box residents are not getting reported in these numbers. And so, many of the census tracts are not accurately being represented in these numbers. And while we know that they're probably accurate in many cases, that the ones that are low probably are low, and the ones that are high are probably high, I wouldn't necessarily put a lot of stock in exactly which percentages or what percentages. So I just wanted to make sure people understand why some of these errors are in these numbers, and, and at least in our experience. And, and, you know, that gives an example as to why, you know, why some of these things are not accurate. The county knows how many doses have been given out. We also know people have been coming in from other places and receiving doses, and sometimes the county doesn't necessarily know that a dose that's been given out didn't go to a non-county resident. So there are some inaccuracies there. But I, and back to the Asian residents, though, we know Asian residents were much more receptive to this from the beginning, and in our area, they were much more attuned to this disease way before even we knew this was a problem. In January of last year, they were calling our school district and asking us to shut down schools. January of 2020, we were getting calls from residents, especially Chinese-Americans, telling us, you should be closing schools now. This disease is serious, this is a problem. Why are we still in school? Why are people still in school? And there was a lot of pressure on our school district. So there were Asian-Americans in this area who were very serious about it and who wanted things done about it. And I think that that's reflected, not just in the early response that they had, but in the response to the vaccine. And so, there was just a different response in certain communities here in the county and in the city, and I think that's reflected in the vaccine data as well.
Thank you. I appreciate all those insights. I might also add, I think demographers are going to look back and say, this is a period of the greatest amount of migration probably any of us have seen in our lifetimes, families being displaced and people moving for a whole host of reasons. It's very difficult to do this tracking, I think, particularly when we're down at the census and sub-census block level. I think it's just very hard, there are a lot of estimating involved here. Councilmember Sparza?
Thank you, ma'am. I'll be brief. I actually wanted to offer my assistance and offer a suggestion. I know that we control actually very few of the resources on vaccinations. I know that the county, we didn't know that the state had sent a vaccine bus to the Great Mall. So that was something that the state did. And then the county kind of does their things in summer experiments, and they're, they're trying to figure things out just as much as we are. And so I did want to offer a suggestion, which is that we kind of partner with, not just us, but perhaps the Economic Development Group in our own city, to offer those retail locations that are targeting the age groups and the demographics of folks that we were trying to reach. That has something that has not been done in the Latino community, that has been done in the Asian community successfully. So that's something that we could do. I also wanted to offer up that we look at houses of worship. I know that there's been an effort locally, we've had successful vaccinations to reach the African-American community by partnering with African-American churches. But we have not done that in the Latino community as much, particularly in the evangelical churches, which is where the largest growth is in the Latino community. And then lastly, kind of to reach all the folks that we're trying to reach in that age demographic, I think we've all been reminded this morning that school has, across the street, has started. And so now that we have physical students here at San Jose State, yes, it's, it's a commuter school, but there are a lot of local kids that go to those schools, and that that might be another partner for vaccination efforts, to have them reach out to their friends and, and coworkers, to get everybody in that age demographic vaccinated. And I'm happy to help moving forward on that effort. Thank you.
Thank you. I noticed, I think, it said Sun, which I think this is South University neighborhood, was up in the top two or three of the neighborhoods of need. And I suspect that student tracking is part of, probably, probably the problem. But in any event, Councilmember Jimenez?
Yeah, thank you. Great discussion. I had two questions. One is for something you stated earlier, Lee, along the lines, and I miss, I didn't quite hear exactly what you said, related to the enterprise priorities and the recovery and the, and the budget. When, when is that, what's the timeline for that? And when is it going to become fucked up?
Sure. So we've been, we originally, in June, had promised that we would return to council or issue an info memo on updated rules around eligibility and anything that we did not yet know in June when we were approving the budget. So we were working on that, and we had told the mayor and the council, probably through the annual report in October, that we would reexamine any of the funding pots that we had put out there for various uses, and if they needed to be pulled back. And we could also have a conversation about the money that was yet to be appropriated. What I said today was, now that we're needing to come back into a response mode, that we were going to take a much thorough look at the budget to see what we still might need for a response, and how long the response, you know, kind of that forecasting of what would be needed. So I still think the annual report is probably the appropriate time in, in early October. But for us to be able to, if, if there are needs before then related to the response, we would be coming forward with those before October.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you. The other, the other question I had is, and I was hoping you could sort of restate your comments earlier, I, as it relates to some of the numbers being a little in flux and maybe, maybe being a little gray and maybe not very accurate. You touched a little bit on just the relationship with the county and how you, for example, the Asian, I think, population being at 99% vaccinated and such, that you all went to the county several times and asked them, hey, is this correct? You know, sort of double-checking what was happening. Can you help me understand, given the fact that some of these numbers may not be fully accurate, how you guys are going to go about making decisions as to where to plug in some of these resources moving forward? Because it seems to me to be a critical question in first identifying, well, what are the actual numbers? And then that sort of dictating where we're going to spend the resource?
Yeah, that's a good question. And I'd ask Dolan to jump in. I will say, I do expect, based off of a conversation with the county, for that, the dashboard to be updated with some changes to the metrics and how it's reported. So hopefully, we have more, you know, more accurate data than we have now to help inform some of those decisions. But I know Dolan and team have been looking at the dashboard as part of that analysis.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Lee. So, I mean, the first thing we need to do is reengage with the county. The county has not updated some of the data since June. And sometimes just getting a contact at the county at an operational level to work through data integration is challenging. We can probably remember when it took six weeks to get a point for food distribution at the county. So sometimes it's challenging to work through, you know, to get to a right operational level. So it's, it's absolutely something that's on our next discussion with the county, is to say, who's the point of contact? We're going to need to start work through what data are they still going to provide us, and what data aren't they going to provide us? We're actually looking right now to build, rebuild our data capability. Unfortunately, operating the EOC for 15 months, taking eight weeks to ramp it down, having it not operational for six weeks, and then starting to ramp it back up, we've lost some institutional knowledge as well. So we're going to, the bottom line is, we need to coordinate with the county, and then we need to build our data muscle in the EOC. So just as you said, we have more confidence in the data, and we have timely data, and we can make better decisions.
And is it safe to say that you all are not going to be solely dependent on the county dashboard and making decisions as to where we're going to expense some of the resources? Or are there other things that you're plugging into that decision?
Well, that, that is correct, in so much as we don't want to own data that we're not generating, right? So we want to have confidence in the data. So I think we're going to have to selectively go through the county data and determine that if there's another source of data that we can get that we have more confidence in, we'll do that. The second thing is, there's, sometimes there's just a lot of data scrubbing that you have to do to get an accurate data store. So we may have to build some additional muscle to scrub the data and say, for example, we know that PO boxes generally are not included, so they're underreporting by 25%, so we have to make some adjustments. That's not, that's not our preference, and historically, we did not want to second-guess the county data. But if we're going to be in this for another 12 months before we get back to some, you know, normalcy, then it probably makes sense to begin to take on more responsibility about massaging the data, so we have more confidence in it.
Okay. So in the past, for example, on the, on the Asian population, obviously, that's just a broad, broad category. You've got a lot of different Asian populations within that, right? I know we touched on Vietnamese, for example, but has the county offered, or do you think they're going to offer disaggregated data as it relates to the Asian population, for example?
Well, they have in the past. So we, we put together a data architecture with about 30 data sets that the county's open data portal provided to the city, and we hoovered it all up through technology and, and reported it out. And then we looked at it and said, 99% seems, you know, pretty high. That's an indicator of maybe there's something inaccurate in the data. And we went back to them, and they showed us that that's the best data they have. So I think in the past, we've accepted that data, but I think, looking forward, we can certainly begin to look at the accuracy of the data compared to real-life examples. I think the post office box is a certainly good one, and say, okay, the reason the county's data is that way is because of this inaccuracy, and then we can try to, you know, correct it so that we have a little bit better insights.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And the very last question I have is to Jennifer, I know she's, she's on the call, but I know that, obviously, our former city manager would frequently state that he has frequent meetings with Jeff Smith, who, who leads the county efforts. And I'm curious, Jennifer, if you continue to have some of those meetings with Jeff, or if, if those continue or need to be restarted, or what's happening?
Yeah, we're in transition right now. A councilmember, excuse me, and we are going to, we are restarting that. I think we have one on the calendar already, so I will be meeting with him, as was Dave Sykes. So that's something that I plan on continuing.
Okay. Yeah, I understand you're in transition. It, it's probably just a unique, just place to, to come from. But, but I suspect that during the course of that meeting or those meetings, some of this is going to come up, right? And that you're going to, okay. Okay.
Yep. I'm going to bring that up. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Can I just jump in? The, obviously, the meeting with Jennifer and Jeff is going to be really important to get on a regular cadence. As early as about a month ago, we did start to reengage just on a regular basis with the county, EOC to EOC. So James Williams and Greta Hansen, and I, and Dolan will continue to coordinate at an EOC level, which has been really important. And then I would say, you know, one of the things that we've pushed with the county and have had success in different programs is just that operational to operational side type collaboration. And, you know, a perfect example of that is Jackie and the isolation quarantine, pushing the collaboration down to that level where we can really move quickly. And so that, that'll be something that we continue to do over the next few weeks.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Thanks, everyone. And thank you, everyone, for your very hard work. I would point out, the more than 85% of residents fully vaccinated, I think, over the age of 12, I think we are still the highest rate of vaccination of any large US city. That is an incredible accomplishment. Obviously, a lot of work of a lot of partners, the county and city staff, everybody working together. And I think, as much as we know we have a lot more work to do, I think we should at least appreciate the great work that has happened so far. Okay, let's move on then. Oh, right?
I think, yeah. So, so we probably forgot that we have a proclamation. A resolution to approve, which is the first part of a very long discussion.
This wasn't just about chatting, I guess.
Mayor, move approval. Second.
All right. There's a motion from Councilmember Sparza. Thank you. I would have been happy just to keep talking. All right, let's vote. That's unanimous. We are continuing to proclaim our emergency. We have items 3.5, 3.5, I'm sorry, 3.4, 3.5, 3.6, and 3.7. I'd like to consider them together, purposes of deliberation, since the contracts are very, very similar. I don't believe there is a presentation. Is that right, Jennifer?
There's no presentation. I'm sorry. Jennifer Schembry. I wanted to say a few words.
Okay, great. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you. Jennifer Schembry, Director of Employee Relations and Human Resources. We do have four agreements before you, and on behalf of the acting city manager, I just wanted to take a minute to thank the teams who are involved. So for the IFPTE, Matt Mason, the business representative, and the AIA negotiating team was made of Florin Lapustier, Talia Fadalazade, Brian Lee. For AMSP, Jesse Perez, Moses Arroyo, Jesse Alvarez. For CAMPE, Olympia Williams, Julie Jennings, Cat Estrada. And then for MEF, John Tucker, Stephen Solario, Dan Gibson, Rachel Atkins, and Cindy Harlan. I'd also like to thank my team, Randy Perry and Bill Golds. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions and recommend your approval.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Want to thank our, everyone who's participated on both sides. These have been very difficult negotiations, obviously, given all the responsibilities that everyone has outside the bargaining table. People are still working to support the community during this pandemic. I want to thank all of our city employees, the many employees who are represented by these organizations, these groups, and thank Jennifer and her team. This has been a very heavy lift. I know you've been through a lot of challenging ones before, Jennifer, so this is nothing new, but we, we appreciate your hard work. But we appreciate your hard work and the work of your team. And I'm glad that we could come to an agreement here and hopeful, hopefully, we'll be able to do so with all of our bargaining units very soon. All right. I'll certainly support this motion. Any other comments? And do we have any? Oh, we do. Okay, Tony?
Matt Mason.
Hi, Matt Mason, the new representative for Local 21. I just wanted to echo the comments of Jennifer Schembry and thank Jennifer and her team, Bill and Randy, also all the bargaining units. I also wanted to thank the council members that heard our bargaining team and our members out, and many times, both on public comment and also in conversations. And although this was obviously a very difficult negotiations, we're hopeful that this agreement, once passed, will help the city start to staff up, to provide services, having listened to the city manager's report and the move on the emergency COVID response. We know that the next year is going to be a different, but still difficult, year. And I know that many city employees have rededicated themselves now that the negotiations is over to make sure the community gets the services that they need. So thank you very much, and we look forward to continuing to work together.
Blair Beekman.
Hi, Blair Beekman here. Thank you very much for these items. Kind of what I said in my consent calendar, public comment, just a thank you that you've worked on these issues. You know, in April and May, things were looking kind of bleak in this area. And like what I also said at consent time, that, you know, there was a lot of heartfelt words and language at Smart Cities Committee a few weeks ago about the subject of city pay raises and what they, you know, how hard they have been working and what they can deserve. I hope, you know, that all the efforts for this item can address, I know the VTA, ATU, I guess, bus drivers and possibly maintenance workers are going through some sort of similar issues of how to address pay raises at this time. And this can obviously be an important lesson for those efforts. And just a thank you that we are acknowledging the work of city government and hopefully it can be a good example for the entire Bay Area that are also asking these same questions at this time. Thank you for your work.
Paul Soto.
Yes, Paul Soto. I, I respect work and somebody to be justly compensated for whatever talents, gifts that they bring to, to, to work. And that the only way that we have as a society to state that we value the work that you produce and the way that we benefit from that is monetary. There is, there is no other way to acknowledge that. Okay? And so if we're going to believe that this is the value, and I agree with it, because when you work for 40 hours, there is absolutely no reason why that human being should not have the ability to just basically sustain himself and move away from work with a sense of dignity and respect and the value. Okay? This is fundamental. And since the city obviously recognizes that and acknowledges that in these documents, then I would like that same philosophy and same ideals to be applied to other areas of life. I mean, it's very simple. I mean, you, we do contract business with downtown, San Jose Downtown Association. Okay? So why don't they pay the workers? The reason why they have a shortage of workers is because they're not willing to pay the value of what that worker is worth. If they would do that and be able to give a human being exactly what it is that they deserve, not how much you can exploit from them, but really what type of value I receive from the service that this person provides. Okay? That is just. And so, like I said, since obviously you value that and you've applied it with respect to these contracts, with those same principles and values, we apply it to other areas of city business. Thank you.
Back to the council.
Thank you. Councilmember Foley.
Thank you. I just want to extend a word of gratitude to Jennifer, you and your team, and also the bargaining units and their representatives. It started off as difficult negotiations, but it ended up being a mutual agreement with respect and with appreciation for all of our employees. And for those employees who are here and listening, we, I personally, and we all believe and know that this city doesn't function well unless our employees are taken care of and they are functioning well. So I'm really happy to see these, that these agreements have been reached and that there is mutual respect on all sides. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Prals.
Yeah, thank you. I'll just echo Councilmember Foley's comments and say thank you as well to our city bargaining Jennifer, your job, and all of our city employees as we went through this tough time in general this past year, and then specifically through the negotiations. Thank you.
All right. Let's vote on the motion, which envelops 3.4, 3.5, 3.6, and 3.7. So we're voting on all of these together unless anyone would like to vote separately?
Mayor, I think we need a clarification.
Oh, we have a conflict? Councilmember? Councilmember Arenas' question was relating to?
This does not include OE3.
Whether OE3, no, it does not.
No.
Okay. So we are clear of conflicts. Okay. That passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. All right. Item nine is the Information Technology Strategic Plan Report. We've got Rob and Dolan here.
All right, while the presentation is going up. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, members of the public. Rob Lloyd, Chief Information Officer for the City of San Jose. It's good to be with you here in chambers, and I'm joined by Dolan Beckel, our interim deputy city manager, and Jerry Dreason, our assistant CIO, is attending remotely for the Q and A portion. Oh, there we go. Cool. So today's topic is a review of the IT strategic plan referred by the Smart Cities Committee, Smart Cities and Service Improvements Committee for council's acceptance. There we go. And wanted to say, by the way of approach, the IT strategic plan connects a lot of our planning efforts with the work that we do in the IT department, as well as across the city organization when it comes to technology initiatives. So the linkages go from the city roadmap, listening to departments and talking about what their needs are over the one-year timeframe to three-year timeframe, connecting that to an annual work plan, which is specific initiatives that are funded, all the way to employees' personal goals and performance reviews. And so everyone has that linkage from where the city is going to the work that we're doing. And it is a process that actually is very respectful of input. There's always more feedback that we can receive, but the feedback loops that we have are to further inform and refine that direction of technology. Because technology in itself isn't the doer of work, but we multiply in employees, they look like three or five or 10, and they can have the analytics and make the right decisions, and they can have the tools to do a better job and a faster job. And so what we try to do on a strategic plan is we take a lot of inputs and we put out four work products. One are the strategies and core metrics that we're going to build around for a stated period of time. Another piece is how we govern those resources and optimize for the city's usage. That resource plan connects with the city budget and respects that process. And we manage by those objectives and key results in shorter timeframes so we can get the work done. In this case, do want to call out a number of inputs that we have, including over 110 meetings that we had with city departments. We met with city council members and committee members. We took into account audits done by the city auditors, the city auditor's office, as well as external groups. We also tapped an external group, an advisory service, to test the plans and direction that we had set and say, what are the trends and risks that maybe we haven't captured and we want you to push on that? And that connects to the performance metrics. Two additional things that we wanted, or at least one additional thing we wanted to also call out, is we did have an engagement with Harvard Business School Community Partners to dive more into digital services, and especially with COVID, where that service set could improve the city and our connection with our community. So the voice of the customer in a strategic plan is absolutely essential, because if we don't capture that well, then the plan is utterly meaningless. And in 20 years, this is my eighth IT strategic plan I've done in my career, and always, there are very department-specific wants. And for the very first time in my career, we actually had very consistent things communicated to us. And we think that's partly because of COVID, and we think that's partly because of the city roadmap. And I say that the city roadmap that you worked on is a gift to the organization because it provided clarity that most organizations don't have. And our IT advisory service called that out as well, is, and they specifically said they haven't seen that before. But on the left side, you'll see the very consistent themes we heard from almost every department. And when it comes to technology, they said, we're going to need IT when it comes to equity because we're figuring it out, but technology and data are going to be key tools that we use in addressing those, those needs. Another thing they said was, the city has changed. We have a digital public, we have a digital workforce. How we interact with each other, how we collaborate, how we work, how we communicate is now changing, and it's going to keep on changing. Another thing they said was, we are redesigning our services. And again, we're still figuring that out, but the access, the language, the reach and ability to make things easier on people is higher than ever and going to be key tools for us. And then the last three things, we heard that data for decision-making is a strength that we have to build in this organization, and they're going to turn to IT for some of that help. And Parks and Rec and a few others actually put it very succinctly, that we're going to need you more than ever and we need you to be ready. The last thing was, everyone has kind of this tacit fear about cybersecurity, saying, I keep on hearing stories, keep on reading things, I'm glad that hasn't been us, but I know that it's important and that we're going to be partners in that process. On the right side, you'll see very specific things from departments that we heard, but I also want to kind of out the gaps in the bottom middle, because those were very consistent as well. How we meet equity goals, the resources we have and how we use a lean set of resources, and how we better manage in a new normal is very important. And one of the biggest pain points that we heard, that technology can help resolve, but not completely cure, is the very consistent theme of, we are one deep in too many places. And so the technology we use, the systems we use, have to give us that consistency and ability to keep on running, because we have brilliant people in one or two spots, but a few of them disappear, and whole city programs, you see, take a step back. And we thought that was very insightful. And so, like I mentioned, we actually tapped an advisory service. Infotech is a top-five IT advisory service. And we gave them four challenges. One was to test our observations and direction. Another was to say, how does the city compare relative to our peers? So are we doing a good job relative to a peer group? Third was to identify anything we missed. And fourth was to identify anything that's potentially high reward that we should invest some time in examining. And wanted to give you a couple of the insights that they had from there. So they said, the city of San Jose on the technology expenditure is bottom three of the top 20 cities on every significant resource measure. And the ones we compare well to, they actually had a note saying they're highly decentralized, and so you can't quite tell where all their IT dollars are. But we know we compare well to them because the dollar numbers are pretty low. So we have some company. And then there, in our themes, we actually identified four through eight. They had three more that they wanted to put on top and said, when you come to these types of solutions or approach for an IT, they're more IT-centric than we were. We're very, very much business-centric and try to express those things. But they did want to call out all the key trends that they had. And so with that, they gave us three priorities and two recommendations to look at, based on all the work that we had done. One was, equity initiatives don't just happen, they take a structured approach. And so they said, you're going to have to teach yourselves how to prioritize residents in your work and services. You do well already, but you're asking something different and more of yourself. And once you figure that out, you're going to have to train people what that means to put that into programs and projects. And then third and fourth, they called out something that was really powerful, was when it comes to equity, we are at our best and most productive when we're partnering across departmental lines and when we partner outside ourselves. And they actually called out some of the examples that they heard in council and the 3.1 updates, saying, look at the compelling work that you did during COVID, was often with others. And so how the organization structures towards that and uses technology to support that, I think you saw in Dolan's and Lee's in that item, because some of the questions you asked go to the heart of that. Another thing they said is, priority two, is organizations are different, and you have to allocate time to understanding how you're going to work differently to match what is now and into your future. And they had a good amount of research based on that, and we don't disagree. And then the other thing they said, in terms of our digital services strategy, said, not only did you get that right, double down on it. Because if there's one lever that you have that does accessibility, that renders better services, that produces data to do continuous improvement, that can connect with the community, solve some of the access issues, this is the lever that can really connect you with a lot of potential gain. And they had two recommendations for the city. I want to be very clear, these are recommendations for the city to explore. These are not, you should do this now. But they had two things that they found in their research of other communities. Number one was, the resource uses of the city of San Jose is so low, you normally would pair that with a lot of consolidation strategies, because you really try to use every dollar to the maximum efficiency. We pushed back a bit on that because we said that's not our style. We think the reason why there's always the debate between consolidation and decentralization is because it's the wrong question and the wrong answer. Some services need to be consolidated and quick and efficient, cybersecurity, infrastructure. Others really need to be close to the business in the city, so analytics, some of those specialized applications departments use. And so we actually have to be able to support both because they're the right answers for that service. The other one was, they made an observation that we underfund our emergency management functions three times, and disasters in the future require a very coupled, tightly coupled response. So they said, why don't you examine having one public safety technology division that pulls that all together and fund it well? So this, both of these would be next steps, identifying the problems we would solve, the approach we would take, and pulling the stakeholders together to say, is there a dog that hunts there? And we'll pull that together if this plan is accepted, and that'll be one of our action items. So how's that mapped to an IT strategy? And all this comes together because it is instructional and it steers our investments in our many other conversations in the city. The service levels that departments were asked for, the budget process, audits, and so forth. And we start with the new mission. Our past missions have been very operational. For the transformational challenges that we have ahead of ourselves, we see two things, and this mission speaks to that, is the challenges departments communicated to us, none of them are one department and none of them are one community. When you talk about blights, when you talk about police reform, housing insecurity, homelessness, those take a lot of people doing good work to solve problems. And our mission in technology, then, is to support those big transformational challenges and solutions. And so we have five strategic pillars that we're going to focus on in the next two and a half years. One is enable equity solutions. One is securing the city, because cybersecurity and natural disasters are more than ever. And, you know, in my career, I've been logistics chief three other times. And this is the first time in my career I've had a triple activation of an EOC. And it seems that that might be more normal than atypical in the next 10 years. Go ahead and throw something at me, Lee, if you'd like, but it just seems the risk, and every year, we have more of these things that come up. Optimization is the heart of a lot of what we have to do because of the lean resource picture. The digital public and digital workforce are indeed things we're going to have to invest in. And on the partnership piece, this is the magic power that we have that the vendor saw as so compelling. That advisory service said, you, compared to others, connect your strategic plan with business outcomes, and then you actually partner well and get those special companies, special nonprofits, and do amazing work. And so you saw that in COVID and the food distribution, food necessities distribution. You saw it in how our 3-1-1 works, and so on and so forth. So they said, if you have that magic power and you can do that better than others, definitely keep it in your strategic assets. This item is, I can tell you, you don't have to read all of it. Read. Read the sides and read the green line on top. Because a lot of technology, people will talk about the technical items we have to do, the bits, the bytes, and the products. But ultimately, we're aiming at that green row on top, supported by the things on the left and right. We need to hire and engage a powerful team, we need to make sure the resilience and security is there from technology. But from there, we need to give departments the tools that they need to succeed. So that means that they can collaborate and communicate, means they have the data and information to make great decisions, means they can access things, be more productive, and connect with others, and even control, like at the regional wastewater facility, a plant in ways that plants have never been controllable before, and higher efficiency, higher safety, higher productivity. So there is a bright future in the technologies and how we can assemble them. The next two slides are those recommendations that we would do further homework on if accepted as a plan. One is, where do we optimize and consolidate? Where do we federate and say, these are shared responsibilities? And where do we put them very firmly in departments? Because that's where the technology and service needs to be. And then the Public Safety Technologies Division is one where there'd be a lot of extra homework to do. The vendor said, you have some peers that you can talk to, but the problem that we have to solve is both resourcing and what that service level gain that we want to make really is. This is the organizational blueprint, and you've heard me in the past talk about this, is, in government, to make change, it's always about the people, right? You start and end with the people. And so if we're going to act, we have to have the people in the right places. All the boxes, we have some staffing in that capacity. All the ovals, we have positions and talents and skills that we need that are currently absent. And then the yellow items are ones that are funded. We're funded for fiscal year '21, '22. And so you'll see those three on there. In the bottom right, you see some disconnected boxes. Those are potential things that we have to look at in the next year, two years, and see where the best places for those are and what the best approach is. But this staffing and structure is what can get us to the conclusions that we want from the strategic plan. Last, we do have some very clear metrics that we always try to incorporate into our work. I'll call out three. The others should look very familiar from the last strategic plan we had. And ultimately, I should add, that we are trying to be as effective with this strategic plan as we were with our last one. Because with our last one, we addressed 50% of our entire software and hardware inventory, we modernized. Our customer satisfaction went up. And you can see these metrics and how they've swung to the positive. The first metric that we're adding is the resident customer satisfaction, and that's where we try to capture how our services are impacting and getting positivity, hopefully from our community. The other one is security incidents, right in the bottom center. We won't ever publish this publicly, because that reveals information that we would otherwise allow people to target us. But our goal there is to keep the number of incidents small and the impacts nominal. And then the far-right one was at the recommendation, the IT position vacancies. We addressed a problem previously where IT had a sustained vacancy and attrition rate of over 36% for almost four years. And we got that down to the 12% to 17%. 17% is because we added a good number of positions, thank you, City Council and City Manager. And so that one, where we had a tick up. But they said, keep that there, because when you're a lean team and you're fighting for talent in Silicon Valley, if you let your hiring ebb, you will create more problems downstream, and so always stay on top of that one. And hence, we added that metric back in that we had anticipated removing. And you've heard me say this as well, if we understand and have done our work well, we can say it succinctly, and here is the strategic plan in one page. So those are the objectives we have, the mission we have ahead of us, we have the key measures and how we're going to approach things, and our underlying assumptions. And we'll adjust this if needed, because we do do an agile strategic planning process where we do quarterly waves of work, and then we ask the organization, is our strategic plan still accurate? And are the priorities that we've named still the highest priorities and best uses for the city? So we work very closely with departments to actually shuffle that, and you saw in the conclusion of the 2020 strategic plan, how many new items had come up, a good number of them disaster-related. And so with that, we're also going to recreate the IT Advisory Board, and this is where we get to tap our community and the amazing people and talent that are in it, to help us steer and make sure that we're properly targeting and performing to the best of our abilities. And so last time, we had the Chief Technology Officer for Intel, we had the Chief Data Officer from Dell, we had the Head of IT for PricewaterhouseCoopers, and they pushed us in very important ways and said, you're getting this right, and you're not getting this right. Resources came up often, the mayor was in a couple of those meetings, we were also able to get some support for some education programs, and some free hardware from them. So these boards are great mechanisms for us to get strong input and support for some more innovative work. And so with that, we always do want to connect with the city roadmap, and that's our commitment, is, there are 15 items on here where IT is connected or the driver. And our mission is pointed at making sure we make impact through these items, because ultimately, the most important thing we do is make our community better and stronger. And technology, we can often forget that, but our commitment is that we won't. And with that, we're here to accept any questions that you have.
Thank you, Rob. Thanks to you and the entire team for your great work. Tony?
Hold on. Blair Beekman?
Hi, Blair Beekman here. Thank you for this item. It was heartening. I've been feeling pretty dismal about digital things in San Jose recently, and this was helpful. Thank you. Thank you for Rob's words about how to deal with the future of emergency issues. He's working emergency plans more than he has before in the past, and thank you for that reporting. It's lonely to be reporting such things, but hopefully, it can be worth it. And I hope we're learning that it can be okay and safe to make those efforts to explain our feelings about possible upcoming emergency scenarios, because that is the bureaucratic future we really need to address right now, and we really need to understand and learn to share. And I think that's how we're going to have to address the future of BTA issues and issues of Gilroy. Good luck how we can do that. Thank you very much for talking about making the ideas of clarity with concepts of equity for your IT plan, number one, and your first priority. And, you know, it's an important concept to be considering. I hope your ideas, I mean, traditionally, equity is the ideas of, how can low-income people be given the same opportunities and advantages and ideas as people of high income have? Now, is that your definitions of equity? Is it a concept of how people can all have the same ideas and advantages, considering they may have limited skills and abilities? That's questions of open democracy, I think, we're heading into. And it's those concepts, I can't stress that enough. I hope we can practice that this fall, that it invites everyone in some way to the process to simply consider open democratic practices for the effort. Thank you.
Paul Soto?
Man, thank you for that, Blair. Man, that was right on time, dude. With respect to, thank you for the report. With respect to equity, you're not going to be able to quantify that, and I really hope that somebody on the council that cancels that portion of them trying to think that they can quantify. The word, this is experiential, it's existential, you cannot reduce, or you can't mitigate the impacts of inequity, and you can't quantify what equity means, because it's very human, it's a very human experience. And so to try to put that into a data point and think that you're going to weave that into policy, you're just not going to be able to do it. In fact, I take great exception to that, and I think that that's very disrespectful. It's very disrespectful for you to think, it's arrogance, to think that you can put that whole life experience, that literally hundreds of thousands of Chicanos have experienced here in San Jose, the Mexicanos, the Chitanos, the Negroes, the Chinos, all of these races of people have experienced something that you can't put into that data point. What scares, what gives me cause for great concern is that we're allowing you to, we're allowing you to do that, and that's why I'm hoping somebody steps up and does something to check that. Because it's, like I said, it's disrespectful to think that you can do that with my life experience, one which you don't have absolutely no idea of what it's like to live in my skin. You don't know what it's like to live as a Chitano in this city. You have absolutely no idea, nor the idea of the legacy that I bring to these meetings. So I would hope that somebody on the council speaks to that particular issue. Thank you.
Back to council?
Okay, back to council. First, I just wanted to say, congratulations, as we go to questions. In addition to all the many other awards, I think we were number-one Digital Cities Award last year. One award I wasn't aware of, on page three, designation by the World Economic Forum as one of 36 global pioneer cities in 2020, and we were one of only two American cities to get that designation. Who was, what was the other American city?
Chattanooga, Tennessee.
Fantastic. I'm just glad it wasn't LA. We beat LA. So as long as we beat LA and we're somewhere in the top, that's great. So I just want to say again, congratulations on all those designations. Of course, when we all started all this several years ago, we weren't even on those lists. So it's just testament to the great work you guys have done. Okay, let's go to questions and comments. Councilmember Sparza?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thanks for bringing that out. I'm feeling a little competitive with Chattanooga right now.
It's not a competition.
We have a better hockey team.
Well, I'm not going to say whether it's right or wrong, but... So thank you for this. I had some comment and then question. So in terms of the equity on page six of the presentation, there's equities in there, and I wanted to relay a concern, which is that, you know, the slide mentions gaps, right? And so my concern is, and this has been brought up a few times, of not being mired in gaps, that we want to get the data, but you could go to folks in most departments in the city and say, where do we really need to be? And I think people could tell you, based on experience. And so we've had decades of one program or another, not to mention the San Jose Redevelopment Agency, and the data that they developed so that we could use those funds, or the studies and data that were developed so that we could use those funds. So we know where to be. I think we do have work to do, not just in terms of collecting the data and measuring how our goals and how we move on that, but also on how we connect different data. I think we do a lot of it intuitively. For example, earlier today, we talked about COVID, right? And we talked about the eviction moratorium and vaccinations, and really, we need to combine that, but they're in two different arms of the city. And so I think that there's some room in terms of how we, as a city, connect what might be disparate pieces of data that are really closely related, either demographically or in other ways. And so I wanted to ask you to talk a little bit more about that.
Absolutely, councilmember. And you, the mayor, others on the dais have challenged us in multiple times where we get stuck in the data. And the bias towards action has been a challenge that you and others have had for us for at least the last two years and more. There's three strategies that we're really pushing on that. Number one is common platforms, where the data comes in and everyone can see very consistently. One example is how we pulled economic development in, transportation in, playing and development into the urban logic usage, to say, what really shapes traffic? Is it really just the street? Or is it how we develop the area, what businesses we're trying to attract, and having that larger landscape? And we did some very research-based works, data science work that was published, and actually won an award. The other one is the push for how we have the skills to do that, because if you give analytics and data, you do not make a powerful data analyst. You make someone more powerful, but there actually is a skill and practice and community of practice that we have to build, to make sure that data can be really used at the power levels that you're talking about, and Councilmember Mayhend have talked about in the past, and the mayor before that. But that skill, that organizational muscle that we refer to sometimes, is one of those gaps that people refer to very specifically, is, I have lots of data, I haven't curated it necessarily in the ways I need to answer some of the questions that are in front of me, and I need to build my people up, or get the right people to be able to do the work that's been challenged. And so I think the organizations have a clear understanding of that. We now have to come together and say, what's our approach, and what's a programmatic approach at building that capacity in an organization like the city of San Jose?
Is that the third thing, the programmatic approach? What's the third thing?
Yeah, sorry, I should have been more clear. It does deserve that structural programmatic approach, and some of that is visible in the COVID response, too.
Yeah, and I think something else, to use the muscle analogy, we've got some protein for the muscle. In the mayor's budget message, we allocated funding for a data equity lead, which is really a data integration lead with a focus on equity. So with that, JD, that job description, it was completed about an hour ago. We're starting the recruiting process. The mayor's Office of Technology Innovation has done some great work with PRNS about scholarships, and with an equity lens is there as well. So we're going to add some additional protein to that organizational muscle, hopefully very soon.
That's awesome. That's really great to hear. And so another question that I had was, so I'm more familiar with some of the digital inclusion networks, like 2-1-1, right, more obviously. And so I wanted to ask how we're leveraging those networks and that experience of folks like the Knight Foundation, some of the work that they've done nationally, as well as in our own backyard. But there's been some really great work in integrating and connecting that data. Is that what this position is going to do and build off of? And then are we going to partner with those private organizations?
Councilmember, Rob Lloyd, Chief from Base Officer for the city. There's at least two answers I would give you on that one. One is diving deeper into the utilization of city services and that data, and we do have a data science, this will be in front of the Smart Cities Committee in September, the first meeting of September, is to take a look at how people are using, who's using what, and what that tells us. And we have some data, some insights from that, that I don't want to seal the thunder now. But there are some clear patterns on what parts of the community use which services and what they need more of, and who we're missing. And so the holes in our radar, because some people don't have access or don't feel comfortable using, and how that's going to shape our services ahead, that's part of the answer. Number two is an honest confession, that we still have to practice and get good at what you're talking about. So there are grants. Modi has been a very powerful partner, reaching across the organization, the mayor's Office of Technology and Innovation, departments wanting to, using the fellowships from Stanford, our relationships with Knight, Bloomberg, and what they're setting up is their grant areas for the year. But we actually have to come together and say, what are the focus points going to be for that programmatic approach? Because you can't do everything and do it well and have concerted progress. So we talked about in our technology and innovation, monthly technology and innovation meeting, of what's that data center of excellence, and Matt Lesh's point on that one, and how we're going to pull together those resources and say, what are priorities one, two, three, and four? And I'm not sure if Dolan wants to add to that, but we still have work to do there, and we know that you're very connected in that, so if we can keep on having that conversation with you, too. Your background in 2-1-1 is pretty special, so we'd appreciate your insights. Anything you'd add, Dolan?
Well, I think, specific to the digital inclusion networks and digital equity, if I'm understanding the question correctly, we, for example, are using the data around, like Access Eastside, SJ Access, and some of the other digital inclusion data that we have available, to look at where is the usage stronger, where is it less stronger? How might we move some of our city services into those locations where the usage is needed, or where the usage is gaps? And we're also working with the private sector, I'm actually sitting down with the telcos in two weeks, to look at our digital inclusion data, say, where do we need to put more small cells so the kids can leverage those hotspots that they have available to them? So I think, to a certain extent, we are doing some of what you're asking in a very manual way. I think what Rob is showing is, is we need to get a lot more muscle and horsepower, so that we have that data being analyzed more programmatic, and able to then take that equity lens to the data and figure out, how do we better allocate services?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm obviously really interested in that third part, the program. Yeah, I'm, I'm obviously really interested in that third part, the programmatic approach and sort of where that rubber meets the road. We can analyze data, analyze data, and it can tell you a lot of different things. But the bottom line is, what is it, what's happening in the real world? So thank you for that.
And if I can add, councilmember Sparza, you, Lily and Coral, you've been in the trenches. So you can actually, you're ahead of us sometimes in some of your comments because I can tell you what my experience was there and you've given us some clues that we've lurked deeper into. But I also want to see if Jerry Dreason, as the point person on our 311 efforts, if he has anything that he'd like to add for you.
Great.
The only thing I would add, and this is a little bit getting into your, oh, I should start. Jerry Dreason, Assistant Chief Information Officer. You hinted at it a little bit, some of the data science work that we've been doing. There's what the data does tell us and there's what we can also see through other trends and patterns that, that isn't told by the data. For instance, we don't get calls to SJ 311 about Wi-Fi connectivity. And so focusing on some of those community enabling things in addition to some of the requests for city services is also something that would be presenting to smart cities for things to consider in SJ 311. Things like affordable housing buttons within our apps or, or, or some of those report where your access to, to digital is strong or not strong. And so taking a look at those things that don't pop out in the data necessarily, but are still important for community enablers.
Thank you. And I also wanted to mention that I appreciate how you started this presentation, which is that it takes a resident-centered approach. And that's where I think we need to not put all the burden on IT because we need to make sure that it may start with an app or start with something, but that it's operationalized, right? Because I know that when something, I mean, I'm sure we all get it. When something's not happening because we've made some kind of operational change, that as councilmembers, we all get phone calls, that things aren't working the way they're supposed to, and somebody decided to tweak something somewhere. But then that affects the trust out of, of the app or of the website or of the, the phone number, whatever we're asking residents to do, their trust has just gone down. And so that means that we need to have that focus be not just IT, but include that operational, can we deliver what we're promising? So thank you. Appreciate that. I have some quick questions regarding page six of the memo. The recommendation number two, the Public Safety Technology Division. I'm not on the Smart Cities Committee, so I, I didn't understand sort of the background on that. So I'm assuming from emergency information and communication services, that includes dispatch.
Yeah, that, that would be 911.
So can you talk a little bit more about that? What does that include? Will that comply with local, state, federal requirements?
So I can give you a very clear and simple answer is, they only, their sideboards were only to make recommendations that would potentially have large positive impacts on the city. So we prevented them from going any deeper because we said that would be...
Could you repeat that? I missed that.
That they couldn't go any deeper than recommendations, general recommendations, because that would be our work. And, and so it would take more time and more depth. And the stakeholders need to be more deeply engaged to go down that path. So they're only allowed to make large level recommendations and say, this is something you should explore. The, the two facts, three kind of, that they sent our way is, your resource picture is, you don't have a lot of money going to OEM, Office of Emergency Management and their, their technology needs. Fire, your team is really small and they don't have a big budget. Police has a good budget, but it's not large compared to your city. And so what their, their observation was is, you don't fund it super well three times. Can you bring it together and fund it well once? And number two is when we see disasters, the number of disasters and the type of response and communication that's required in the future and the technology that, that folks are unifying around in terms of communication, first and then other things, it seems like now's the time to do it. And then the kind of the 2.5 fact is they gave us a couple other cities that, that have been trying to go down this, or started to go down this path. And there are lots of trips, lots of hazards, lots of what they called control comfort, lots of resistance, things you'll run into. But if there's a problem set that you solve for the City of San Jose, you should really explore these things. And so they gave us three sample cities. Another one, they talked about how Austin, they took nine, or three, 911 out of public safety altogether and, and put it in the 311 group. I wouldn't recommend that here. But they said, you have at least something to explore here. And, and we stopped them at that precipice because we said, don't go any further. That, that's then for us to engage our stakeholders and really talk, is this, is this real or not?
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. With that, I'd like to move accepting the report and with, if recommendation number two progresses, that that include PIS-FIS as well? I know there are smart cities, but that it get, PIS-FIS also be included in that work?
Absolutely. I can speak to that, if I can. So that's connected to the Safe City item that would go through PIS-FIS by definition. So absolutely.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second from councilmember. Oh, I'm sorry, forgive me. I didn't hear that. Thank you. Let's councilmember arrange a second. Councilmember Mayhan?
Thanks, Mayor, and Rob, Dolan, hi. Thanks for the report. I had the privilege of seeing it in Smart Cities already, but great to see it again. And I'll also congratulate you on the many accolades that the city and our IT team in particular have received in recent years. You guys have been doing great work. I also want to give you a shout out again for that dashboard predictably, right, guys? I think that the way that you measure what matters and consistently report out on your performance, the good, the bad, and the ugly, and talk about how to improve it is really just a great example. So I, I really appreciate that. Also, I wasn't going to mention this, but I, something you hear me say on the Smart Cities Committee that I'll just echo since councilmember Sparza brought it up is how important it is that we follow through on that resident or customer experience and close the full loop. I think the word councilmember used was operationalizing all the way through. But I'll just echo that so many of the concerns we hear from residents are about, you know, I, I reported that abandoned vehicle and I just, I never heard what happened. Or I never, you know, really just figuring out how to ensure that it's not just a pretty front end, but that we follow through all, all the way is just so critical for building trust with the community. That's more of a comment than a question, obviously. I guess the high-level question I wanted to, to ask that I failed to ask in committee is when you look at the strategic pillars, which I think are really, are really excellent, and the goals for 2023, what do you see as the biggest barriers to success? What, if, if that vision isn't fully realized two years from now, what are the leading candidates for why we might struggle to execute on the vision you've laid out here?
Number one, very clear answer, councilmember is, and Chair Mayhan, is the multi-domain type of work. This, that, those five pillars cross departmental lines, cross resource lines, even cross city lines. And whenever we do that, we can struggle. And we saw that in the audit of city projects. Whenever you do multiple departments, departments have to agree on a lot for that service and that follow-through to really render well. And the resource discussions become difficult as well. It's like, who owns what, whose dollars are where? And because we're such a lean organization, there's kind of a fasting effect where people like, I need that bite. So I, I think fortunately, our city manager comes from the budget side and can have those, those discussions better than anyone I know other than Jim. But that, I think, will be the definitive thing about this new transformational type of work that IT is doing, is how well we work together. But I'll also tell you, in my experience in three other cities and a state, no city does it better than the City of San Jose. We, we come together collegial, collaborate better than any organization I've ever seen in government. And so it's both our strength, but it'll continue to be our challenge.
That's great to hear. Dolan, you look like you want to jump in as well. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think, I think maybe the bottom line a little bit more, it's going to be the organization cultural change associated with, with consolidation and federation, right? Whatever that means here, it always creates a lot of angst. And if you, if you don't do what Rob said, which is involve all the departments in embracing the decision, it's very easy, whether you're consolidating the 20 different Bell companies into AT&amp;T, which I did, it's very easy to say, well, I'm not going to use that tool or I'm just going to do it a different way, right? So I think the bottom line is, is the, the financial business case will probably be a little bit easier to work through funding and budget. It's making sure that you get all the stakeholders involved, supporting that this is the right thing to do with the business. And so the organization and cultural chain associated with consolidation and federation is usually the biggest challenge you have to overcome. And I think Rob's got a, a great approach to, we're gonna, we're gonna evaluate this and what's the right answer for the city is the way we move forward, not a top-down kind of bureaucratic decision.
Great. Now, that makes sense as a potential barrier. But it sounds like you're, you're not too worried about that. You feel like that's something that we'll be able to address as a city. So I guess I'd maybe suggest another potential concern I've heard a bit about, which is our procurement processes. And does that, I mean, certainly, you know, training and culture change is the most important thing to get right. But if you're confident that we're going to be able to figure that out across the organization, can you talk a little bit about how we test and use and ultimately adopt new tools?
Yeah, and I know Dolan will want to add on to this one. So I, I don't want to leave the wrong impression that I am confident, but it will be hard. And every organization that's done that kind of organizational change has struggled. And, and so we have to work through it, but we have the right people and the right mission-first culture here that I think the City of San Jose is going to be just fine.
Right.
Number two is on the procurement side, you know, that's, that's the balance, right? The three tenants are value, transparency, and fairness. And at some point, we have to throw speed in there because some technologies move two generations in a year. So we have a great relationship with our purchasing folks. There is a memo coming to rules to bring at your behest as well, an earlier take at the procurement improvement process that was suspended when, when COVID happened. And so we'll tell you about the, the approach, the consult who's on board to take a look at that. But there's three levels of where that question lands, which is, what do we do differently? What strategies actually can ease the hurdle? And how do you connect it with practice and people? And, and so I think there's more coming there and the committee and council will be able to push on those things. But the, the work is important and our purchasing team is, is a very good one and don't get as much credit as they deserve. But transfer, again, transforming organizational approaches and values takes time and effort. It's, the amount of urgency, I think, comes from council and saying, you know, is, you've brought it up multiple times, the mayor has over the years as well, and said, we, we have to be able to match, like when we buy things, at the speed of cybersecurity or the speed of 311, because you, you can't let your services ebb because some of our administrative processes might hold us up. So, so there is push and pull there.
Yeah, so Rob's looking at me, so I guess I'll answer. I actually, I think we have to decouple brand-new technologies from consolidation and federation of existing technologies, right? So I actually think, you know, the procurement challenge is larger on the new technologies and the things we move faster on. If we look across a city and we've got 20 different asset management systems and we can determine we only need three, that's really not a procurement issue. That's, 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 that's a technology and cultural and process change issue. So I still think actually that, you know, the, the largest challenge is on the two recommendations are going to be more on the cultural and organizational change than they are the actual technology procurement. New, new technologies, we definitely need to speed things up.
Yes, absolutely. I'll say, I spent over three months, as Rob knows, trying to hire a contractor to build a, my council office website. And I appreciate that we have new standards for security since some of my colleagues created theirs. But that was a very, very arduous process for, you know, building a WordPress site that most people can do in a weekend. So I'm well aware of the pain of adopting new tools. But yeah, and just to finish up, this will be my last question, but on that front, what is the, can you give us a sense of the magnitude of the opportunity around consolidation and maybe upgrading of legacy systems? And what kinds of productivity gains or cost savings we, we might be able to realize as a city in that arena?
Actually, I cannot. We, we haven't done that kind of analysis. And the, the best answer I can give you, councilmember, is we wouldn't tell you there's a money savings. It's, those resources could be better used where we have deficits. So we would still ask for more overall, over time. I, I can tell you the highest priorities we have right now, based on what we see in the strategic pillars, is we still have some older systems that are functional, but hold the organization back. So when council asks the, the budget team for different modeling, the systems we have in place work, but don't allow us to do those, those models and those simulations and different approaches to give you more program-based budgeting or things like that. The financial system, the mayor's heard me joke, I think it's almost as old as I am. And I just had a birthday, so we're staying in lockstep with each other. So the, the realities of our systems is there's some investment that needs to go there to give people the basic tools to do their work well. And where we've done that, like with COVID, and we invested in remote work and Zoom was there, Teams was there, Office 665 was there, remote connection was there. And we turned our organization virtual in days to a week. But some of our core systems still need investment. But to answer your question very specifically, we have not done an analysis saying, here's how much we could save and pivot. And partially, we would say that's because that would be the wrong message. We're just, we're trying to invest in the right things. But it's more of a management approach and rationalization than it is trying to claw back out of departments. And I somewhat give a caution, that should not be the message because you'll, you'll have a different response from departments.
Yeah, that's fair. I figured you weren't going to offer any money back to the general fund, Rob, but fair enough. I do think that maybe the productivity gains being the more, the more relevant side of that. So great. Appreciate it. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cohen?
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, Rob. You know, since I've been here, I think I've said this to you before. I'm impressed by the technology, what we've been able to accomplish in the City of San Jose and also continue to be impressed by the way you present our technology roadmap. It's very clear and concise and it's presented in a very, you know, in a, in a way that's very easy, easily accessible. So I, I do want to repeat that because these presentations are always very easy to follow. So I appreciate the way you put that together. So a lot of questions I want to ask about are about resources. You know, we, we have a tendency in Silicon Valley, you know, to brag about how much we get done with, with minimal resources. And, and, you know, you showed a chart about how low we are in the dollars we spend compared to other cities. And obviously, we spend very little compared to maybe organizations in Silicon Valley. And of course, even in, even in companies in Silicon Valley, IT departments are underfunded compared to what they do. And they spend a lot of time talking about how much they got done in being under-resourced. And, and so you did a lot of that today. And, you know, the question I always ask is, so what could we, you know, what's being, what's being missed? What's being short-changed? What, what, you know, honestly, there's a lot of things on that roadmap that we say we're, we're trying to do, but what are we not doing? Or what, what, what do we, what are things we need? What should we be focused on potentially adding in terms of resources in order to make sure we're not missing something? Can you give us a little bit of, of that from your perspective?
Yeah, absolutely. And it's, it's a very sophisticated question because it's easier just to say, where do you are compared to others? I'll give you three, three areas where we specifically aren't as strong as we need to be because of the resource picture. Number one, just to make sure I speak into the microphone here, number one is depth. And so, and this isn't just IT. This is what we heard from all departments, is when one person leaves, whole programs stop and take a step back. And we see that in IT. When one key person leaves, our ability to manage a program immediately reduces. Number two is the organizational development and communication. We sometimes move fast like cybersecurity. And if we really want it to stick, we communicate it better and we actually get out with customers and have a higher-touch approach. But we have four help desk people supporting 3,500 people, right? And so how do you do that? You make it as efficient as possible, but it's not as high-touch and friendly. And we've, we've had compliments from council about our staff. They are quite friendly. They just don't have time to spend as much time with people as they otherwise would. And the third trade-off is rationalization, is we're desperate to keep things running and our opportunity and capacity to bring things together and bring multiple departments to use similar tools and build on same platforms. We have emphasized that more in the last four years. But if we had more time, you would reinvent more processes onto com, modern platforms that help people more. And so those are the three areas I would tell you where we see more deficits than, than opportunity. But that's where we would apply resources if they were extant. But again, we're not the only ones. Police Department has a really low per capita number. Facilities, ridiculously small, but amazing group that support all the city facilities, Parks and Rec. You could go on through the entire budget book. But it's also amazing how much these people invent and do good with so little.
Yeah, no, no, no question, the people that you have are doing amazing work with, with the resources that you have. You actually touched on two of my next questions pretty amazingly, and I guess they all fit together. Can you talk about your turnover? I mean, I know IT is a difficult competitive environment here in this area. So do you, do you think turnover here in, in this city is high compared to others? What do you, do you think you're, we're competitive with the cities around us? Are we competitive with? competitive with the cities around us? Are we competitive with, you know, with the IT environment in our area? Are we, you said that we're doing well in terms of vacancies, but does that, that doesn't necessarily reflect the turnover that's happening within the year. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, another very insightful comment, because we do hire, and we've created with our HR and OER friends, an IT hiring process, and even where some of our hires that don't fit our positions, but other departments can use, they can use the same hiring sets. We can accelerate some of that. But we were actually maintaining quite well. And my worry was when the county indexed against private sector. And so their, for example, their cybersecurity person can make up to, I think, 270, 290. Their CIO is 340. The numbers just totally distort, and we've lost now three people to the county. And so when you hire around mission, we were doing good at hiring and retaining people. But we have had to have more churn in hiring as our public sector competitors have started ramping up their salaries. And we're going to keep on working with HR and OER around that. But that was the trigger where we started seeing more of the hiring activity to recuperate from people churning. And unfortunately, some of our, some really good people left, but when you can make $30,000 to $40,000 for the same job, I can't quite blame them. I can miss them dearly, but...
This is an important area for us to keep an eye on, I think, as far as being competitive.
Yeah, Jennifer Schembry and I have talked about it as well.
And moving on to then, I think, with probably the most important area, you mentioned cybersecurity. So how are we doing in that area? I mean, this, you know, I'm hearing more and more about the vulnerabilities and how important it's going to be for us to make sure that we are secure. Do we have the expertise we need? Do we, are we, do we need to add some positions? Do we need to do some more there to make sure we have on-staff the expertise to protect our inventory, our resources?
Yeah, so let me kind of frame it in. And we do have a closed session every October, November with council, so we can have a more open conversation with that security carve-out and, because we don't want to err things that could put us at risk. So two general comments, council member, is one is, I don't think anyone has the investments and even the tools and the vendor environment to truly be protected today. And I think SolarWinds taught us that, is you can't even trust the software manufacturers in some cases that what they're selling you is secure. So a lot is in doubt. We have a lot of, we have a very talented team, and we have an approach where we actually connect that with the service set. And we did an RFP as a lead agency with multiple other governments to do a toolbox so that we have services set up and access to products and services before we need them. And so it lays out our roadmap, can give us what we need. And then also, if a crisis hits, those services are there. And so part of the strategy there was to make sure we have a core team, and they layer on top a services community that they can tap as needed because it is extremely hard to hire and retain and pay CISOs, Chief from the Security Officers in the Bay Area. I went to one meeting, and two of them had Lamborghinis, and I was like, that's nice. That's an industry to be in. But, so our approach strategically is to be able to balance that by having both a combination of internal staff and service sets that we can access as needed. And that's how we keep the program going. And we have a really good team, Marcelo, Ed, John, and Eugene, working across the department. The one critique I think we would make of ourselves is we see so much risk, we're moving so fast with MFA, with closing down personal computers accessing the city, all these things that we have to move fast on because they're taking down other organizations. I wish that we had more time to make it a more gentle move for our people because security never seems convenient. It's always a tax on people's time and effort. I just wish we could find a way that security wasn't such a mess in the community at large. But we are where we are.
And we ought to have a message for our employees that having your computers shut down when you're not using them is important for security. I don't think we send that message out much at all. And that's what I'm hearing is a really important thing. So letting people know, when you leave and you're not using your computer, if it's turned off, that's the most secure place your computer can be, right?
Yeah, we can connect that with, you need some non-PC time, too.
Right, that's true. And just about one more thing on that, and potentially this and the other area on the public safety IT. Can we, can we work with other jurisdictions maybe to collaborate on some of these areas so that we're not just having to, every jurisdiction, every public agency isn't having to hire and have their own IT staffs maybe trying to solve all these problems in their own silos? I mean, the county, the city, and all the local cities having to do these things independently, is there a way that we can be working together on some of these major issues?
And there is, to give credit to police and fire, there is some of that effort already. How you cross those lines is a traditional challenge in public safety. In Phoenix, when I was there, we had a consolidated fire response, and it was nearest response. It doesn't matter who you work for. Everyone had a Phoenix badge, Phoenix Fire badge, and they were the model for that consolidated response. And you could connect that with faster response and common skills and doing the academies to bring people on very consistently. But it's really hard to do. And in fact, it was fairly expensive when you took a look at what cities were charged. So I think that's all going to be part of that conversation on that recommendation, too, is what problems can we solve and what can make that impact? And we have a great police chief and a great fire chief, and Ray Raridan's a great emergency management director. That's for us to look to them and saying, answer your question. How can we do this better and with others?
I'm also thinking on the cybersecurity side, too, right? Working together, maybe to, on the technology side, if you, if we share staff, share technical skills, maybe it'd be easier to get those resources and expertise.
We actually do, and I'll probably just say at very high level here, is we actually do have a cybersecurity alliance where we have joint response.
All right. Thank you.
Yvette, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cohen.
Thank you. Rob, thank you for your presentation, Dolan, and your expertise. Many of my questions were asked. One of my concerns is staffing, and you addressed that. We're in a tech-rich environment, as you know, and so the private sector and public sector are competitors. And I know that that's what would keep me up at night if I was in your position, is the lack of, or losing, losing good staff, because then you lose their historical memory with the organization. I've said this before in smart cities, and I'll say it again here, is that technology shouldn't drive what we do. It should enhance what we do and make lives, our residents' lives, easier and more effective and efficient, as well as our staff's jobs should be more efficient and effective through technology. I'm someone who, you know, loves my paper, loves to write notes, but I understand that may not be the most effective way. And particularly when we're working with spreadsheets and analysis and all of that, that we need to really use cross-platforms and use the technology to its benefit. As far as 3-1-1 is concerned, and we've talked about this before, it's important that our residents know how we close, have closed the loop, that they report an abandoned vehicle, yet the abandoned vehicle is still in front of them, and they receive a notice that the case has been closed. So figuring out how to resolve that so the resident loses, understands what's happened, the car gets removed, and that eliminates a frustration and also eliminates a phone call to our council offices, right? How many calls are we reflecting or receiving in regards to that? So I appreciate the presentation and all that you do with really a slim department, and I hope we can figure out a way to get more staff who will stay around. But that difference in compensation is huge. That's a big deal. I do have a couple of questions. One of those, I've been an advocate for seniors for a long time. So some of our seniors, and actually, a lot of our residents are not familiar or comfortable with technology. So I'm excited about leveraging technology and delivering services that we can, but I'm concerned that we're leaving seniors and others behind. So how can we ensure that we're not leaving seniors and others who are not tech-savvy or little tech-averse behind with access to the information they need or access to reporting? That's the first question.
And so I can tell you how we prioritize the services, and maybe it's just a good call-out, is we work with Parks and Rec, we work with ESD, we work Department of Transportation. And so we're the services that would be best served by being more digital and both help staff and the public. And so it's very based on what's extant, as opposed to what could be. And so one of the things we've challenged ourselves in that group is, we should be thinking about the potentials, too. You know, we see the world as it is and what we're struggling with every day, and we can't over-rotate towards fixing the problems. But engaging you, engaging better, sometimes we miss that. And that's part of the 3-1-1 dive, the data science dive, is who are we missing? Who's not engaging? When we look at the demographics, who are we missing and why? And so Jerry has that baton with Herman and with Kia to say, where does 3-1-1 need to go next? And they have a work plan and roadmap that they're developing. And one of the channels on that roadmap is, who do we need to connect that we've missed before?
Rob, if I might add to that, council member, we're working with the library... What's that?
I was wondering who was speaking. Where's that voice coming from?
Jerry, please.
It's Oz.
I see you now, Jerry. Thank you.
If I might add to that, we're actually working with the library on getting into some community conversations, voice of the community. We've had conversations with the library about seniors in particular, and as an interesting way of thinking about digital equity to the senior populations as well, and how can we include them in the conversation, too?
Thank you. I appreciate that because there's, well, it's important that we focus on delivering information in multi languages. Technology is its own language, and that may be a language that is uncomfortable for all of us, or many, many of us. So thank you for that. I appreciate that. And then the last question I have actually has to do with accessibility. Have you considered working with the future Office of Disability Affairs? That's putting it out there, you know, the assumptive clause, right? In creating technology systems that will help be accessible for all.
Yeah, and I'd invite Jerry to add in more, but we have, as part of our work plan for 2021, '22, we said accessibility was going to be a dive we did with the communications office. And we've paired up with community members as well as the Pacific ADA Center. And then Zuma Marcial, and said, how do we connect with that? And then as the office potentially could grow legs, we said, on our horizon, we might need to connect with a new group, which you so named. But we don't have a person on the dialer yet. So as soon as we have people to work with, we're very happy to connect. And I do want to give credit, as Jerry jumps in, the team did a great job of saying, these people matter. And we have kind of not focused on them enough. And literally before this meeting, I was just at an ADA training session with Matt Opsel and seven other individuals across the city are saying, here's how we need to make sure our pages and our products are more accessible for people with, who are differently abled.
Great.
A couple of things to add, if I might, Jerry, please, again. We're also partnering with Sarah Zarate, the CMO office as well. And I think she has some involvement in doing some of the accessibility work as well. And looking at that from an organization-wide perspective, not just, not just SCA 3-1-1. So SCA 3-1-1 is one channel, but we obviously have multiple service delivery channels, and we have to look across all of them. And Rob mentioned, too, the training that Matt Opsel gave to all of the web content writers in the city. We have really upped our game in how we're coordinating across departments. We just recently updated our website digital services policy, included language in there about accessibility. We worked with the procurement office and finance to actually add some language into our procurements around accessibility and making sure that we're inclusive of accessibility standards in our procurements as well. So not saying we have it all covered, but we are definitely taking that as a serious initiative.
I appreciate that. And your response indicates that it's really high on your radar, too, and that's really important. Well, I want to thank you for the presentation, but I have to end by asking you this question, Rob.
Uh-oh.
You know, we're losing a lot of people to other tech areas. So I'm assuming you're getting phone calls every day to come and work for them. So do we have you ironclad in a contract that you're going to stay with us forever until our tech is solved? And you too, Dolan, for that matter.
I love you too, council member.
So I'll say, I'll spare Rob that. So we talked about, so you've got Jerry up above our assistant CIO.
Jerry, of course.
I'm Dolan down below. We have, I do think you brought, two things. The question about depth, I think, is going to be increasingly challenging as we look at more of these strategic initiatives. You know, getting all the great work that Rob has done, what's moving forward with these two recommendations is much more leadership-focused, much more experiential-focused, to be people who've led, you know, consolidation efforts or federation efforts. So I do think the top of the leverage structure is another depth area challenge that we have in the city. Yeah, Kib did leave me his handcuffs, so I'm, you know, I'm cuffed in for a while. But I think that's a concern as well. So I think that Jerry and Rob can't keep solving the Microsoft Office SharePoint issue of the hour. And we need to, you know, so they need some leverage under them so they can focus on some more of the strategic things and really see those productivity gains as well as those efficiency cost savings. Then just back to the seniors question, something I think I wanted to call out, because I know Jill and Ann from the library were here. But the library has implemented a tech call pilot for whether it be the San Jose, East San Jose digitally underserved areas, or our second-most underserved digitally underserved are seniors. It's a digital world, right? So just, we're starting to make those first steps of just, if you can't get online and you have trouble and you're a senior, what do you do? You can call the hotline and get some support. So I think you're going to continue to see things moving in a positive way in terms of not just getting connected, but then helping people with information literacy and accessing basic services, training and education through the phone.
And could I just add to that?
Modi.
That our San Jose Works kids are manning those phones. So we're training young people who are already pretty tech-savvy, how to engage, which is a fantastic program. So I just want to give it a plug. Sorry, council member.
So thank you. So we've got the intergenerational relationship, too. That's fabulous. So, Rob...
Just want to give a plug to Modi. They've helped create a program to support people in the community as well. So you have a lot of people trying to do the right things.
Thank you, Rob.
That's great. So Rob, Dolan, and Jerry, thank you so much for your presentation and your expertise in this area. I really appreciate all that you're doing and look forward for more to come. Thank you.
Thank you. And Rob, I appreciate you giving a plug for Modi. That's shorthand for our Office of Technology Innovation, the mayor's office, Jordan and Clay and Christine and Stephen and the whole team. I know they work very hard, so thank you for that. Okay, Councilmember Renes.
I was wondering who Modi was. I need to meet Modi. I was like, they're the answer. They're the answer to life's questions here. Thank you for a very thorough presentation and plan. I have, I think a lot of my questions have been answered by previous discussion. One of the ones that remains is, when I think about the operational assessment report from EOC, we identified gaps there, and we identified some trends that we would address in a new pandemic or a new emergency. And so I'm wondering, how are you connecting with those two things? And I'll give you an example, because one of the things that I made sure to incorporate into that assessment report is that the violence against women and young girls, it's something that research already supports. It's not, you know, it isn't, it's a thing that we just need to look out for. Instead of looking backwards and looking at the last three months, how can we in real time create response to those, to a trend? And I think that's where we really need to move in that direction because looking back is great to recognize what we need to do, but that means maybe six months. Anyways, it's difficult to do. So, any thoughts?
Yeah, so at least two thoughts. One is, the operational assessment report was actually very informative. One, it said, we got the technical things right, but the, there's more work to do on what the community needs are, right?
Right.
Which is exactly what you just pointed out. So, I think it said like 83% of people said they had everything they needed technically in the pandemic to do their work. But the challenge issued to us was, how do you listen to more of those community-facing, voice-of-community items? And I want to be really clear, on the technology side, we very rarely drive those. We support departments that say, I need to create a solution for this. And the way we would approach it is, there has to be a sponsored department in saying, you're responsible for this and accountable, and then we can help you build a technical solution based on where it is in your priorities. So, in that case, councilmember, we would work with someone, I'm guessing in police and fire, to say, this needs to be a priority in that set. We can, I just wrote it down, I'll raise it when we talk about that Safe City item that goes to PIS-FIS, because I think you actually brought this up last time we did the Safe City presentation. And with that discussion about that unified IT is, what problems can we solve and that we do need to solve? So, I wrote that down, but it hasn't, we don't have it on our list from IT yet. I'll check in with police and fire and see if it's on their project look ahead.
They currently have an RFQ out, because we secured some money to help identify with those trends, to recognize those trends in San Jose, and then what are those trends telling us? What should we do? How should we respond? But there wasn't any takers on that RFQ. So, either we developed them internally, I think you call them data scientists, that would come in and help develop internally some of our staff. I think it's really important for us to continue to do that in all departments. I just use the police department as an example, but, because it's been on my mind, and I know that our residents deserve in real-time responses, not looking backwards at things. So, I appreciate that, and yes.
And, councilmember, let me also make a connection to our friends at Google.org, who have the mission of creating new solutions that don't exist. And they've done some support for LGBTQ kids, Trevor Project helped us reinvent 911-311, and U Technologies support that. But this sounds right up their alley, so I'll give Erin and Jen a call and see if they have any space in their work plan for this cycle, or if we can get ahead in their next cycle.
Yeah, that would be wonderful, because there's, you know, intersectionality, not to get off topic, there's intersectionality with violence and young girls, and that being the catapult to them entering into the juvenile justice system. And the juvenile justice system is actually doing some project where they're keeping track of that. And that kind of information impacts the kinds of providers we fund in our best programs, and the gender-specific programming that we should pivot to. So, I appreciate the follow-up. The other piece is, I know that you talked about, or we were recognized for leveraging our resources, and one of the things that I think we need to make sure we have, I think you talked about like a common platform that all departments use, because as, and I think it was Councilmember Sparza that talked about it, these are, these residents are one and the same, right? The folks who are going to, or that we want to target for vaccinations are the same, maybe the same people that are applying for rental assistance. And how do we not duplicate our efforts or maximize our efforts? And so, is that common platform, is something that is doable, that you think could be achieved in the next, I don't know, three, five years, one year?
So, I would say there has to be commitment to that. It is the gold standard, where you have unified platforms that people share, and there's shared services agreements around those things. But they're also, as the city auditor pointed out in the 2019 Technology Deployments Audit, they're often the hardest to do, because they require people to agree on something. And it's easier for them to say, I just have my need, I'm going to take care of myself.
Right.
And so, what we do from the IT point of view, and some of the powers that the CIO has, is around purchasing, around budgeting, we have an input and approval power, and that's something we push really hard, is why buy one of everything, when hopefully we can get platforms that connect and help us solve lots of different problems. On those solutions, like even during COVID, or sorry, it was the floods of 2017, we tried to put together a common platform for the community-based organizations, to say, how about people apply once?
Right.
And the pushback was on their data policies and their technologies, said, we're just not ready, not right now, and then it doesn't happen. So, I think, councilmember, the right answer to your question is, if we're committed to that as a priority, and that rises above others, then that is always the direction we're going to push. But it involves getting a lot of people and a lot of partners to agree on the same thing, and that was what InfoTech pointed out, is to do that well, you have to have approach, a good approach, and you have to have garnered a lot of trust over time, that people said, this is worth trusting, that we can do this.
Right.
Because otherwise, people fall by the wayside, and you don't create better solutions. So, the resident-centric approach, a programmatic structure, internal partnerships, that we can do it well internally, and a structure and kind of training on how we do it with others as well, that kind of innovation program.
Well, the county has done it, I think, with their housing, in their housing area. I know First Five has done it with service providers within their network, their service network. So, it can be done, and we're inherently an entity that is trusted, right, more, maybe more than an upcoming nonprofit. So, anyways, I just think that we would save ourselves a lot of work if we just, at the very least, began internally to share some of that data. One of the things that I remember from last year's budget process is that our city manager submitted a budget addendum that recognized the lack of a unified database or platform in order to report correctly under race. We just can't. Different departments collect different types of information. And so, that investment really needs to happen. I'm not sure where that would be for our city manager's office. Is that something that?
Actually, I can speak to that somewhat, councilmember. We created the city open data environment, and that is a half a petabyte bank that people can put the information that's useful across departmental lines. What departments have said is, I still lack the person to work with you to pull that stuff together and keep it running, because that data, you create integrations and it loads, so it's always current, and you don't have to have a person run a report, clean through it, and post it again manually. But the organization said the data analytics work is where they don't have the right staff in the right places with the right skills. But we actually have the technical capacity now to do exactly what you're talking about.
Right.
Again, the depth of the organization is usually human, and the latency is usually a human latency.
I think it just needs to match, and maybe this is just a comment for city manager's office, but I'd like to hear a response, is that at the same time our race and equity department is training, our department's defining maybe their strategic plans and objectives, programmatic, you know, down even to the programs, that we also move in the direction of being able to collect some of that data, because at one point or another, it's not going to do us any good to have well-trained staff when we can't collect the data and show that we're actually serving who we want to serve. And we won't be able to know whether that strategy is effective, right? So, any responses? I've been looking at you, because you're next to me, but you don't have to, if you don't want to.
No, I would just say, I agree. As we, training all of us to use the data to, you know, arrive at insights and trends in our decision-making process, is only as good as the data that we have and that's accessible to us. So, point well taken, and we will continue to, kind of, whether we come back on this issue or other items, update the council of that progress, but do hear you loud and clear.
Great. Maybe it's something that can be passed on to Rob, that budget addendum that pointed out in terms of gaps.
We'll send him a few. Happy to send Rob a lot.
Send him the whole report for him to read.
Just to be upfront, councilmember, any technology and data budget item does actually come through the CIO's office for review and input, and that is where we say, we need combined approaches, we really don't like fragmented approaches, because it's reductive rather than additive, right?
No, I can, I can hear even in your answers how integrated they are, and, you know, you're recognizing from different departments, you don't just draw the line within just the IT. So, I appreciate that. The last thing I was just going to mention is that we also have California Emerging Technology Fund.
Yep.
That we can help align with what we are finding the trends to be for our families. And I, talking with our Evergreen superintendent, she recognizes that there's still families that are not receiving that training. And so, I think that our contracts also need to reflect what the needs of our community are. I know we have like a helpline, a technical assistance helpline, but the truth is, it's so difficult. I think we just need to go out into the community and do some of this support, including some of the seniors, the senior population, and all of those folks who typically won't receive an email as an invite. Anyways, I appreciate everything that you're doing. I really look forward to a point where we, when we talk about one program in service, that we are being very strategic in our approaches, and we're as efficient as we can be. And then, hopefully, the IT department can meet and confer for those Lamborghinis that you talked about earlier. I don't know if you'll get them, but, but you certainly could try. You deserve them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jimenez.
Yeah, thanks, Rob. It's been a lot of questions, so I want to try to just zip through some of the questions I had. One of them is, you know, looking at the organizational chart on, I think on slide 20, I was trying to make sense of it, and it prompted a question for me. I was curious if you could tell me, on the top right, I think it shows department tech managers, as you can see on the top right. That prompted a question for me, is how many departments have their own sort of tech folks in within?
I believe it's seven or nine. So, you've got police, you have fire, you have ESD, sorry, Environmental Services, you have Public Works, you have Office of Retirement Services, let's see, who else am I missing? Libraries.
So, there's a good number. Okay, all right, all right.
A number, a number.
And so, I guess the question that came to mind, and this is, I have an additional question after this, but it's along the lines of what Councilmember Foley was saying about how folks interact with sort of, what I sort of have in my mind is this public-facing technology, you know, e-signatures and uploading documents, whatever it may be, right? But these respective departments, do they all put that together? Is it your department that helps facilitate that, or how does that, how does that work?
So, over the last four and a half years, we've actually set standards and architectures that departments have to follow, and where most of them do so just fine, and others have a place where they need to push for good reason, and we'll give them an exception.
Okay.
But we really try to keep a rationalized and coherent picture of the technologies, because we actually don't have enough money to spend on lots of different flavors of the same thing.
Hmm, okay.
And so, that's how we push and pull. But we also try to stay receptive enough that we don't say you have to do it our way and do it worse.
Right.
If they have a very specialized need.
Okay, so, just, I'm trying to think in my head how it would play out, so you all would develop a particular form and say, this is the way you upload, this is the way it should be presented, public-facing, it should have this, these are the criteria, this is what you should do, they tailor it to fit their respective department, whatever they're using it for, then they sort of make it available to the public.
Yeah, examples, SimplyGov for workflow and signatures, we put that out for folks, cybersecurity standard tools and coverage, we just say, we're going to cover you, you don't have a choice on some of those things. Others are much more voluntary.
Right.
Organization development tools, like training, that kind of stuff. But we try to put out what covers the entire organization.
Right. So, now, going back to, say, folks in the community, whether it be seniors, or people that don't speak English, or people that do speak English but are just tech illiterate, right, they just don't know how to navigate things, who, whose responsibility is it, and it may not be the cities, right? I think, I think every individual person has some semblance of responsibility to learn how some of this stuff works, but whose responsibility is it, whether it's your department or the individual departments, to make sure that whatever they're putting out, that their respective client base is able and understands how to utilize that?
Yeah, that's a very insightful question. So, the structure we have is, when we have a service, we say, we charter it, and say who's responsible, accountable, informed, or contributive of that. And so, for example, on 3-1-1 services, you'll have a business lead department, you have a technical lead from us and potentially from them. We'll build and we have clear targets on how that's supposed to perform, but ultimately it lands on the business unit, the department, to say, here's how the service needs to be rendered. And then, technology is the enabler of that.
Right.
But we try not to tell them how to do their work. Sometimes we probably overstep a little bit, but.
And are there any examples within some of these departments in which the departments provide some sort of tutorials to the public on how to utilize some of this technology?
Yeah, there are, and I think Jerry probably has the full portfolio, he could give you a lot of examples, but.
But they exist.
Yeah, the customer touch piece is honestly also a place where we always need to improve. But Jerry, anything you want to add?
Yeah, so Jerry, recently again, so usability. The one word that we didn't mention is, we actually do have usability specialists, starting in the Office of Civic Innovation, now we have them tied to SGA 3-1-1. We also work on our website channels as well to look at our audiences and look at it from their viewpoint. We actually poll in, and do user-based research, where we poll in different consumers into studying their user experience and how they use some of our digital tools. So, we include that into all of our testing, user testing, before we deploy some of those products.
Okay, all right. And to me, this fits under the category of the equity sort of focus, right, and how to build an equitable sort of usage or infrastructure. And the reason I'm asking this is that I've gotten folks reaching out to me that are small business owners, Latinos, small business owners, and even some consultants that work with them. And I know Chris Burton's here, so hopefully he's listening. But they've essentially told me that they're, what's happening is, some of these businesses don't, these business owners that are charged with submitting documents and things of that nature, like they're having trouble with it, so what they end up doing is hiring someone, paying them $100 to submit the form for them, and things of that nature, because they just simply don't know how to do it. And so, it just, for me, it brought to mind sort of the need in the city, to the extent we have the resources and we can do it, I think it'd be great to have some sort of a tutorial. And again, back to the equity piece, I'm not sure if in fact that does happen, and if that could happen in certain spaces where this is happening, but even in different languages, right? I think some of that's important as well. And so, I just like to put that out there, that that's something that I hear that's happening, and I think, you know, it's sort of the way of the world, but to the extent we can help mitigate some of that, I wanted to share some of those concerns. The other question I had related to the, let's see, it's slide, the slide 23, the Information Technology Advisory Board. And the first thought that came to mind is, how do we prevent some of these folks that are on the board from peddling their products to the city, right? And then, obviously, I see that you have only non-sales on there.
Yeah.
Is that for that reason?
Yeah, so, literally, if you try to sell something, we tell you, you're disqualified from the procurement process. So, they will only send their corporate person, like their CIO or CTO, they won't put anyone from their sales organization in there, and they have to draw strong lines. And it's part of my job, chairing those committees, if someone gets a little too much about their products or what they use in their company, we say, you got to quit that now.
Okay. And then, the eight members are made up of, you say, ones from each pertinent field. I'm not sure if you touched on the different fields, but one of the things I was going to ask you about is, do we have anyone on that advisory board that deals with the user experience? And I'm curious if that plays into anything that we do as it relates to reaching out to some of these communities that don't often.
Yeah, so, we haven't assembled the board yet, but Kip, Dolan, myself, Jerry, Matt Lesch, talked about what are the domain knowledge that we need now. Previously, it was very infrastructure and operations-based, because the last IT strategy plan was a brilliant at the basics plan. We had to rebuild the organization. This one's transformative, so we have data analytics into practice, one of its customer experience into design, one was operationalization of services. And so, I'm forgetting the other three, but those are the areas where we say, now we need a technology leader from a company that really is respected as top of the, top of the line and gold standard, and we invite those people. And the city of San Jose, you know, my past experience in other cities, you might get three or four out of 10 invitations. Our experience with the Cybersecurity Advisory Board. Our experience with the Cybersecurity Advisory Board and our IT Advisory Board is, we're batting 90, 98%, only one out of 20 invitations that someone said, no, I just don't have enough time. So we, we do get to tap a rich community, that rich in talent and, and knowledge, so I have no doubts we'll be able to get someone good.
Okay. I, I just think there'd be value in that and I suspect you'd probably agree. The, the other question I have is really, really tied to the use of, and this is the last question by the way, but the use of technology as it relates to different languages. And so I used to be on the Smart Cities Committee, I think we even, might even touch on this at some point, but it seems to me that some technology, whether it be in English or not, it's sort of intuitive and you know what button to push and things of that nature. And so how does language, because we're a diverse city, play into some of the, the products, the public facing sort of things that we put out there as it relates to language and technology and the interaction there? What are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, and, and you, you remember some of the Smart Cities journey where we said, it was a dream of mine and in the last strategic plan, we updated it and said, language is part of accessibility and part of equity back in 2019. And so we said, we want to create language as a service. Government talk isn't normal talk. We use a lot of words and vernacular that no one else in their right minds would. And so how do we translate that so that people don't get lost in the edifice of our websites? And who do I talk to, which government? And so we did the language translation work and the, the learning pairs, machine learning approach to language, so we can give what starts off with Google Translate or IBM Watson at a 60%, 70% effective translation rate to the 80s and 90s, so that's quite meaningful. One example is when we first tried translation of fireworks. For the Vietnamese community, kept on translating to bomb, and it's like, well, that's a horrible translation, that's, that's not what we mean at all. So we, we turned off the Vietnamese translation and said, it's not ready yet. And, and the, the machine learning approach gets us to a point where we can collapse those barriers and allow multiple languages to converse to us actively as our agents speak in English and convert back to them. So the technology is finally getting to a point where it can bridge on an active basis, good quality communication, high fidelity communication. And then the, the other piece of that is putting it out as a service so other communities can benefit from that. And there's some regionality. What we, the way we talk isn't necessarily the way governments in Georgia talk, we've discovered. And, and so some of that is, is how do you put these services out so we're lifting all boats? But then the iconography is the other thing that you're talking about, and some of our research was very clear about that. Sometimes you don't need words. If the, the iconography is clear, think of your iPad. People figure out how to use that when they, they had an example where they dropped a crate of those in a village in Africa and they figured out how to use them just fine. No, no language, but it was so intuitive. And so our previous user experience researcher pointed that out is, don't always focus on language. User experience is also iconography and how you navigate. And Jerry, anything you want to add on that? Because you were integrated in that project.
Oh, you nailed it. Thank you, Rob.
Well, listen, that's all I had. Thank you so much for the report, you know, the, the awards and things of that nature, you know, the staffing going, you know, the, the things, all, all the numbers that you presented certainly seems like we're, you're going in upward trend, so congratulations and thank you so much for the very thorough, thorough report. Appreciate it.
We have great organization, thank you.
I think this is the most extensive discussion of IT, I recall, on the council in my, in my 14 or so years here. And so I just wanted to say, Dolan and Rob, thanks for making IT cool enough to capture all of our attention.
Showing the love.
Yeah, and the love, showing the love. Yeah, Rob, Rob did show the love to Councilmember Foley, but apparently not to the rest of us. I guess we're just pieces of meat. Councilmember Frost?
I, I was just going to echo the thanks. I, I think we've been extremely pleased with how you have helped lead the department and all the efforts, and obviously we recognize it's more than you, it's your team. But, and I think from where we started, just really, really impressed with, with how the department has helped our city. And I think, you know, that was shared and as the mayor just pointed out, so just wanted to offer my thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Sorry to, I know you guys are trying to get back to work, but I just had a couple more questions. First, on page four, there's some discussion about legacy systems that need upgrading and replacing. And it says, chief among the systems needing to be modernized are the city's financials and budget platforms, human resources, talent management platform, and a payroll system that includes 25-plus years of customizations. And I'm certainly not going to argue the point with you, I'm sure all it's true, but can you help me understand, because I recall like three or four years ago, we spent a bunch of money on a budget and payroll and financial set of software that was going miraculously solve all kinds of problems and help us be able to actually engage in, you know, approaches to budgeting that we had been urging for many years but could not because of the software obstacles, including actually providing line item budgeting for council to really, and, and the public really to see transparently where the dollars are going. And we paid for it, we implemented, I, I know it took, the implementation took several years, or several months at least. Why didn't that fix this?
The, the key answer, Mayor, is, is that was a modernization of an existing system, so you left yourself anchored. And so in 2015, it was 2015 through 2016 was the, the Pubs Project that you're referring to. And it was a number of millions of dollars, but the, the heart of the RFP was actually to catch the system up that had been neglected for many years. And so we were so far behind on updates and upgrades that it was starting to fail. And, and so the budgeting piece, you're right, was an add-on on that, but it kind of got the short shrift of, of the entire procurement. It was left to the end and it, and it did get its, its due. The, the other thing I would say is there's some organizational readiness that we, as the, as your CIO, I would tell you, we, we need to invest in to make sure the teams are ready. So when your principal accountants average two years of experience and the budget staff has a lot of other things, you have to create the capacity for the people who are really good at it to reinvent the work. And a lot of the consultant work was just making what we had work in the updated version.
Right.
And, and so there was some gaps closed, we are now operational, it's not failing, and, and we can run the organization on those platforms, but they, they aren't modern and I, I don't, my read is they, they won't give you in the next five, 10 years what council is going to say, we need analytics and the ability to move resources.
Right. So we got Pong 2.0, but we didn't get Grand Theft Auto.
Actually, the PeopleSoft upgrades, I think there were 30-some updates and upgrades that had been back, so you had to go through a lot of them.
Yeah.
So it took a while to get to current.
Yeah, and, and just to jump in, I, I mean, I think that process got us integrated with the budget process into a PeopleSoft system and EWay, so it was all kind of integrated into payroll as well. I think what we found through the budgeting process, as Rob mentioned, it was, it was kind of an aside, is the amount of daily programming and kind of what the budget staff would need to go through to, to integrate that system on a daily basis, it actually hindered the development and kind of transparency of the budget. So, you know, we've, we've gotten it up to par where we need to be, but I think at this point in time, we are looking at whether for a budget system, we need something integrated with all that, because there are pluses and minuses to that approach, and one of them has been kind of that program-based budgeting and being able to look at line items, but also just the efficiency and ease of which the budget staff puts, puts the budget together has been sacrificed through that process as well.
Yeah, and if I can make three adds, so I'm not sure if you remember in the interview, actually it might be a different panel, but Hyperion came up and we said, if you're doing Hyperion, it's a beast. It, it will bleed you dry in some spots, so you better have the right people and effort to do it well. And, and we identified that it, it did come up a bit short and, and needed more attention, more, more staffing to make that happen well. Number two is the financial system still needs some updating for it to properly feed. But number three is it's because governments, so much of our budget go to people, and that position budgeting and forecasting is literally half a billion dollar plus of the budget, right, is, is, so swings in that matter a lot. Even overtime in one department could be tens of millions of dollars, right? And so there's some readiness, there's some better technologies and some better business processes we can invent, but I, but that's going to be a multi-year investment to be ready for that to be successful. Roughly half of all ERP projects fail. And, and my advice always, having recovered two in, in two different organizations, is always be sure you're ready to have your best people reshape the processes and lead the project and have other people to take care of the day-to-day so that, that you're ready for the change.
Well, I guess I'm cheered by the fact that half of all ERP projects actually succeed, it sounds like, because I know that's, that's challenging in lots of places. I appreciate that Public Safety Technologies Division recommendation, I know that's super hard to implement, but it seems to be really important, and I, I embrace that, although I have to admit, I have heard some grumbling, as I'm sure you have too, so I guess we'll, we'll move carefully. I know you've heard me gripe before, but I just thought I'd put it on the record, my favorite word, procurement. When we last talked to the committee, I think there was discussion about getting an info, memo back to council in May, which kind of would do some sort of dipping toes in the water of sorts, but not necessarily reflect enormous amount of actual conclusive change. And I guess I'm wondering, as you guys have noodled on this, is there a pathway to accelerating that work? Because it seems to be in the way of everything else we're trying to accomplish, whether it's equity or efficiency improvements, whatever it is, that procurement is always what's holding us back.
Yeah, I, I think the body of work is there, and we'll bring this literally into, to, the memo will go up and it'll be actually in the October meeting, so in, in a month and a half, it'll be before you and Councilmember Mayhann and others on the Smart Cities Committee to really have at where that progress is at.
Okay.
I don't want to speak out of turn for, for finance because, because it is their body of work, but I'm not sure if Dolan, you want to add anything?
Well, yeah, so I, I think just to, Dolan Beckel, interim deputy city manager, just to, just to clarify, the, the infomemo is going to catch people up on what we have done, where we are, and, and where we're planning on going. There is a budgeted procurement improvement program that the finance department says they can't get to until H2. We're trying to, you know, see what we can do to help them accelerate that, but they do have a lot of work with the recovery and all the FEMA reimbursement, and so I, we need to be respectful of that. What we have done is, is finance has been open to creative ideas, like when we had the Small Wonders Program in the Smart City Committee, and we used kind of some agile procurement and things like that.
Yeah.
So Jerry and I have actually been, been talking about some areas within San Jose 311 that are, we need to do some procurement and looking at maybe those are areas where we can do some, some innovative ways of procurement while the finance department's getting caught up and then can have this consultant kind of look at the whole picture of the procurement problem, the procurement improvements that we need to make in the city.
Right. Okay. Well, Dolan, I'm guessing you're going to have support from many of us, if you would just want to cut and paste whatever agile procurement you used once that worked, you'll have a lot of cheers. So that would be great. And then finally on the, the dashboard, the measuring results, which is a really cool dashboard, it's fabulous in so many ways, particularly all the progress that you guys have made, but one of the measures is IT as a percentage of city budget. And I, I'm guessing none of us would really consider that as a real result, it's more advocacy?
Yeah.
Why is this a metric?
So, so there, there is a, some Gartner research that went into it and said, organizations that actually invest about three and a half to 5% of, of their budget into technology
Right.
actually perform at a better rate than the others. 5% are the more innovative ones, 3 and a half are you're adequately investing into your technology needs. And so that's the metric we have where we said, and remember, we started at 1, 1%, and with, with your support, we've, we've grown that over the years. But that, that was the research point of what should we spend on IT? It's a difficult question to ask. The most simple answer we can give is this research from Gartner from a number of years ago, that said, three and a half to five, depending how innovative and how much you want to reinvent your services.
Okay. That's very persuasive, persuasive. It's still not a result.
It's true.
It's fine. Thank you, Rob. Appreciate it. Thank you, Dolan. Okay, any other comments, questions? All right. We have a motion, don't we, from Councilmember, is it Sparsa?
Sparsa.
Yeah. All right, let's vote. All right, that motion passes. And item 10.2, Councilmember Sparsa is, is present to vote as well.
Yeah, that's a yes. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
All right. Item 10.2 is a conforming rezoning site development permit for property located northeast corner of Story in South Jackson. This is a continuation of an earlier item. So Chris, I assume you don't need any more presentation or?
Yeah, sorry, Mayor, just a couple of quick comments, just to kick us off, if that's okay?
Sure.
Mayor and Council, Chris Burton, Director of Planning, Building and Code Enforcement. As the mayor mentioned, this is an item that was deferred from the June 22 agenda that incorporates a rezoning site development permit, a conditional use permit, and a determination of public convenience and necessity. Staff just wanted to note that there is a change to the resolution before you with the addition of a condition of approval with the applicant's consent, which reads number five, off-sale restrictions. The permutee has voluntarily, voluntarily agreed to limit the hours of alcohol sales to only between 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM and shall not sell beer singles. And with that, staff's recommending approval of the project.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Crossco, do you want to hear from the public first, or would you like to? Okay, let's go to the public.
Color, color 5140.
Yeah, you should be able to sell beer there whenever people want to buy it. How come one liquor store can have beer and another one can't? He was a little bit discriminatory, and what are you going to do when you're a working man who gets off, who has to work a night shift, to get off work and want to buy some beers? It just, it, I mean, it's puritanical. I mean, you guys are like, you guys are like the mirror image of what the Puritans were like in this, in back when this country started. You know, no swearing, your tone, don't do this, how about your decorum? Oh wait, we're going to limit alcohol consumption now. You got, it's like a handmade kale down there, I swear to God. You know, I mean, you should be happy someone wants to invest in your district and sell a taxable item, so you guys have money to buy all this procurement that Sam wants to have. You know, keep in mind, hey, beer is taxed, cigarettes are taxed, guys go in to buy these things, they buy a bunch of other stuff. Now where are they going to go? Someplace else. This little guy wants to, you know, have this new gas station? How is that bad? You know, you, you guys, you guys are a bunch of moralists, you're a bunch of Puritans. I mean, if I said a bad word right now, you guys would hang up on me. If you couldn't put me in a stockade, I know Sam would, Sam would love to put me in a stockade. But yeah, no, I, I see no reason why this guy can't open, redo a gas station and sell some beer. Horrasko, you should be ashamed of yourself that you don't want taxation in your neighborhood on these evil products, right? That's why you taxed it in the first place, so you guys can, you guys could have that extra money to throw around for all your goodies and, you know, handouts to people. I say, open that liquor store, open, open that gas station, let some people buy some beer.
Tessa Woodman-C. Thank you, Tessa Woodman-C. Well, I think this was the item that was up a while ago, with Councilwoman Crossco saying that there was a lot of alcohol going on in her, her neighborhood and didn't want that, and I really appreciated that. And, you know, this is where, you know, we're making money, the city is making money on, on the, the problem, you know, on the vices of our community, and we shouldn't be doing that. I call that not right livelihood for the city, you know, and that's where the hotels, the same thing, you know, we want hotels everywhere because the city makes millions. And like Paul Soto said, the, the porno movie theaters that he had to put up with, you know, and the sexual abuse, you know, in, in terms of his neighborhood, because the city was making money on where they wanted to, you know, put these movie theaters. And it's all about business. And so, you know, the issue is that this was, you know, looked at and said that, you know, we shouldn't have the, the alcohol, there's so much alcoholism on that east side is what, what Councilwoman was saying. And then the other issue is that, you know, even the gas station, I mean, in Petaluma, they're, they're not allowing any gas stations anymore, and you can't even have any additional pumps. We should be stopping all gas stations. That is really the, the issue. We're in a climate crisis. I mean, I was just reading about the firefighters and their, their stresses and emotional breakdowns that are happening from fighting fires and destruction that they're having to witness, and it's going on. I mean, Susanville right now is being evacuated. I mean, we, we have so many problems that really we, you know, we shouldn't be developing be developing anything anywhere except for, you know, all the buildings that we have should be it. We need to degrow. Everything else should be about us, you know, dealing with survival, you know, mitigations and resiliency, which is to grow food everywhere we can. That's what we need to be doing.
Blair Beekman.
Hi, thank you. Blair Beekman here. I remember this item from late June. Thank you that you've worked something out. I hope all sides are in agreement of, it seems like a fair compromise, nine AM to 10:00 PM. And what Tessa said, you know, there's, there's been issues, it was described that, you know, there's been problems in that area for a while now. And it seems like a fair compromise. And I hope all sides are happy with it. And good luck. And thanks, thanks for the, showing what can possibly be good negotiation. Thank you. So thanks for this item and thanks for your time.
Paul Soto.
Yeah, Paul Soto from Horshue. I want to thank Councilwoman Carrasco for bringing up the, the issues with the, with the crime that, you know, is associated with alcoholism, not necessarily that store, but just with alcoholism in general, you know, the associated social ills and the, you know, the decay and decline of a human being, and, and how sometimes the behavior when drunk can lead to other, you know, sometimes even criminal issues within the community. So I appreciate you centering that conversation. But I think that, that conversation is separate. I don't think that we should penalize a particular business that sells a particular product when you have these, these, actually health issues, because alcoholism is a medical issue, to kind of like draw an association between those two. We're not necessarily drawing the associations with the gambling. In fact, we're no longer even allowed to have a crime report with respect to activities around a gambling facility. But we all know that when you have, when you have that type of vice, you're going to have by extension, these other issues. So I want to thank you for bringing that up with respect to this neighborhood. However, I think that the business owner has, has, the last time, he had stuck in his heels. And for them to come back and to be this amenable to a compromise, I think deserves acknowledgement. I think that they've done their due diligence in order to rightfully take into account their, the needs of the community and balancing that with their need to do business. And so because of that, I think that he should, this particular issue.
Roland.
Thank you. So very briefly, what I would like to do is to echo the, the comment about a similar development at the gas station at the corner of Santa Teresa and Cattle Road. Specifically, I would like the city to establish some kind of policy whereby housing above these convenience stores is at least studied, studied to some sort of fashion and then proceed with it as appropriate depending on the surroundings. And one quick last comment, I'd really appreciate if somebody could please click on the Zoom attending, attending link right at the top of the agenda and monitor what it is that we are seeing here. It's not the same as what people can see on YouTube. Please look at these addresses and thank you for fixing the audio.
Armando.
I hate to interrupt you, Armando. It's me, Magdalena. It's over here.
Oh, hi.
Does, he represents the applicant. Does he get two minutes or does he get five minutes?
The applicant gets five minutes, I believe. I can do it in two.
Okay.
Yeah. So I'm sorry. My name is Armando Gomez and I represent Robinson Oil. Robinson Oil is a fourth generation family owned business located in Santa Clara. They're also the owners and operators of 36 Rotten Robbies throughout California, including the one at Story and Jackson and many others in San Jose. Some of our stores are older and like the one at Story and Jackson. And we've made the decision to upgrade many of these locations to provide a better experience for our customers, our employees, and some places improve the neighborhood. Before he has an application for the Story and Jackson location, we're very proud of what this store would be and, and what it will do for the corner at Story and Jackson. We'll be building a 3,200 square foot convenience store where one doesn't exist, adding landscaping, lighting, and offering items such as milk, juice, sandwiches, snacks, pastries, beer and wine. We'll be giving the neighbors a safe, clean place to purchase their fuel and do some fill-in shopping. We think it's a perfect project. We're very proud of it. We think it's kind of the chef's kiss of projects. This is actually the fourth time we've been on your agenda. At one of the meetings, you had requested that we work with the district office to kind of work some of these issues out. We believe we have done that. We are going to agree to not allowing single sales of beer and limiting the hours of beer and wine sales from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM. It's going to be a bit of a little challenge associated with it, but you know what? We want to be a good applicant. We want to be a good business. So we'll make it work. I just want to thank the council and staff for their work on this. I'm here to answer any questions you may have, and so is Aaron Graciussi, who is the president of Robinson Oil. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Crossco.
Ken, I'm unmuting. Councilmember Adonis contaminated all of us. But, you know, I, I want to thank the applicant for, for coming back. I think it was a month ago or right before recess. I don't remember anymore at this point, and staff. I had, it's, it's, I had clear reservations a month and a half ago. And I'm not, and I'll tell you, I'll be very honest with council and with mayor and our audience. I have had a track record of not approving these, except for maybe I think one in Councilmember Chappy Jones's district because of the purposes of revitalizing and taking an old dilapidated building and turning it into something that was more meaningful to the community. Rotten Robbie has been there. I gas up there all the time. And, and I know how busy it is. I also have a Rotten Robbie on White Road. And since they remodeled it and, and they also have a liquor license to, to sell beer and wine, we haven't had any issues. We, you know, cops have been called there because we've had, you know, loitering situations and, and issues that really run the gamut of kind of normal kind of behaviors that go on in the community that sometimes are disruptive, but have never really had an issue with Rotten Robbie. The concerns that I had over a month ago had more to do with the reports that we saw from across the street. And I've gotten some, some reaffirmations and confirmations from our police officers that they're going to work with my office to see how we can help these businesses become better neighbors in a district that really deserves to have good businesses, great products, great services, and, and a peaceful environment, which is not necessarily happening from across the street. That was my reservation. I sat with the applicant and discussed what my concerns were. And, and, and I'm grateful that, that they've accepted to limit the hours of sale and also for me, which is really important, no single, what do they call it? Single cell, single cell sales? Chris, single cell sales? Is that the way?
We have beer singles is the reference in the.
Yeah. And so these are, of course, you know, the 40s that people might come in and pick up and, and potentially drive away with or, or walk through the neighborhood and, and create potentially some situations that are not favorable. So, you know, I want to thank you. And as a result, I'm going to support the, the recommendations by staff. I'm going to support it because of the modifications made to the application. And, and again, I don't want to penalize a good business because another business is not behaving well. And at the end of the day, that's really what it came down to. This is an establishment, like I said, at least on White Road, which is in my district, where we've had no issues. And it's a beautiful facility. Folks are very happy with it. I go there quite often as well. And it's probably the nicest building up and down White Road, at least in my district. So thank you, Armando, for being here and for, for the family. I understand a family member here is present as well for any questions, I guess, if, if folks have it. But I am moving the recommendation.
Second.
Second.
All right, motion and second. Are there any other comments or questions? All right, let's vote. All right, the vote is 10 to 1. We now have time for open forum. Tony?
Blair Beekman.
Hi, Blair Beekman. Thanks for the meeting today. To quickly offer there for, with your digital issues, that, you know, the future of cybersecurity itself, it has a lot to do with open democracy. And, and the sharing of, and learning of cybersecurity has a lot to do with how it can be shared, how its process can be shared and be familiar with, with everyday community or just parts of the community. And there's a familiarity in the future of cybersecurity that, that's an openness about it. And it isn't just, we lock everything up. It's an important concept. The ideas of open democracy this fall are incredibly important, I feel, what we can be developing, how it can be included in the ideas of equity and reimagine. I think that's the sort of fall we should be headed towards. There were so many questions about VTA issues that people are asking about. I think it's really a good thing to address and as usual and as always. And I think, I hope we're moving, progressing towards good city charter ideas that can include ideas of open democratic practices. The charter process can be hopeful if we, if we let it and it can be a good community process. With 37 seconds, I, you know, I've been trying my darnedest to learn how to talk about open public policy with, you know, the future of natural disasters like earthquakes, wildfire, and sea level rise. And it's sometimes difficult. I have not been able to include that as we consider these issues, we have to also consider how to mitigate and lessen these concepts of natural disaster capitalism that work around these subjects. How do we learn to lessen and mitigate those subjects? Thank you.
Roland.
Thank you. And good afternoon, mayor and council. I'd like to rewind to an earlier slide, I think it was item 3.3, which showed the FY 2122 roadmap with a bar flash, high speed rail strategy to build a San Jose of tomorrow with a downtown for everyone. I don't think there are any issues with this strategy until one comes to the fact that the entities responsible for the delivery are the VTA and the High Speed Rail Authority, neither of which has any kind of a track record of delivering these kinds of projects on time and on budget. And now I'd like to touch on what recently happened to the rear of the Verspire building at 130 Stockton and how now the proposed urban capital development across the street from Whole Foods will impact our ability to leave the track after all this gets built. So in closing, my recommendation to council would be to consider referring these, these kinds of issues to MTC mega project delivery task force and rely on the, on the MTC's input on which entities are more likely to deliver expected outcomes on time and on budget. Thank you and good night.
Carl Guardino.
Good afternoon, Mayor Licardo, Vice Mayor Jones, and members of the council. My name is Carl Guardino. I'm honored to serve as Executive Vice President for Bloom Energy headquartered in San Jose with nearly 900 employees in our region. These past 18 months that we've endured together through the COVID challenge remind us of the vital role that our frontline hospital and healthcare workers have played to keep us as safe as possible. They have stood up for us throughout this challenge and it is time we stood up for them. That's why this Sunday morning, August 22, at the Discovery Meadow in downtown San Jose, we will be hosting our inaugural Bloom Energy Stars and Strides Community Run and Walk with all the proceeds going to our frontline hospital and healthcare workers through the Valley Medical Center Foundation, supporting three county hospitals, 14 healthcare clinics, and more than 1 million of our neighbors for their healthcare needs. We have an ambitious goal in just the inaugural year of this new community gathering to raise and contribute at least a quarter of a million dollars. We know we'll be much more successful in achieving that goal with your help and participation. I have two gentle requests this evening. As busy as each of you are, we're hoping that you and your families might physically join us on Sunday morning by registering at starsandstridesrun.com. And that too, that you might through your social media channels, spread the word to your communities so that we can come together and support those hospital heroes. Thank you.
Tessa Woodman-C.
Thank you. Okay, good. Thank you. Well, okay, 615 Stockton Avenue, an historic part of our community. And what's been happening with our historic neighborhood, our ancestors, our Native Americans, our Chicano community is saying that they want the land back. They want the land back because you came, the, the white man came, the Europeans came and they, you know, the Thomas Fallon, that's what they're saying. They want it melted down. And what I'm saying, and they want their land back. Okay? And what I'm saying is I want my land back too, because you have stolen our lands. And what, what, you know, it's, you know, what is designed for our cities is in your pocket. It's, it's in your ballpark. And you have decided that we're going to have hotels. So that makes you money. And then we decided that there was going to be, there was a proposal for housing. And my council member, Deb Davis, lied and said that it was a state problem. And that is unacceptable. It was a county, it was a city decision. It was a city decision to, to be business friendly and that it was the H2.1, 2.9 on the general plan change that she was on. And she says it's on. So they lied. And the thing is, she lied. And the thing is, this is the problem with our general plan. This is where even Matt Mahan is saying, you know, the general plan with the opportunity housing, it's been closed. It's been, it's not open to the public. And this is what has happened. Nobody came to our neighborhood and said, how do you feel about having a five story hotel? Or how do you feel about not having affordable housing? They took it away from us because it's, because Deb Davis wants it to be business friendly. Instead of controlling the pollution and the noise of the businesses, she, she protected the businesses and keeping the residents away. So we didn't get affordable housing. So what I'm saying is that we need to grow food. And that is our, our issue that we're saying now. We want the city to buy the food because we want no fossil fuels in our polluted neighborhood.
Paul Soto.
Yes, Paul Soto here. This has been, actually, that report that Lee gave, that should be on the news. That should be on channel two. Every single local Bay Area broadcast news that produces news that covers the city of San Jose, that whole report, everything that he said, what he said and the implications of what he said, needs to be put out there to the public immediately. So I'm asking if there's any spotlight, anybody's on these calls, they need to start reproducing that information. Okay, that's number one. Number two, I really appreciate the. two, I really appreciate the technology report. Because basically what you described is the infrastructure that you're setting in place for like your little social engineering experiment. Okay? And the reason why I know that is because you got a bunch of white boys that are still trying to quantify what equity means. You really think that you could put me and put my empirical life experience inside your little digital capacitator, feed me in there and think you got me figured out? I mean, that's what I mean by that portion of the report is insulting. I'm glad you were very like, like open because you guys don't know what it's like. So you don't know how much you're actually revealing when you talk. Because you don't have a mindset or framework or reference point that would, that would give you a detection to where you would be able to see something very clearly. Because you've never experienced that. It's not part of your experience. So you could have all the data you want in the world, but you are not going to be able to interpret what you're looking at. You, that, that's the part, that's the key, that's the gap, that's what's missing. And so I just want to thank the council for bringing those two items up, but it needs to be put on the news.
Caller 5140.
Yeah, I mean, it's too bad you guys can't, you know, the guy, you had, you had to reduce that guy's sales for his beer. You know what's funny is that the city council never turns down that pot deck by the San Jose pot deals. I mean, the San Jose Police Department. I mean, the San Jose pot dealers. What a bunch of dirtbags those people are, taking the tax money. Peralos loves it. I watched him, I watched him rub his hands together when they talk about the pot tax. But you know, don't let Rotten Robbie sell a beer. And hey, and Sam, I saw you there with your buddy, Gavin Newsom, nodding your head the whole time. Is your neck sore yet? Your, your neck must be sore today. Just nodding, 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 everything he said. Then you maybe say no, you know, you nod your head another way because you were disagreeing or whatever with, or, you know, with something negative that he was saying you were in agreement. It was unbelievable. You guys should see Sam. He can't even speak Spanish. He has on a camera and he was, he was trying to speak Spanish. He couldn't do it. I couldn't believe it. I had, I saw, I saw the whole feed of this thing with him and Gavin Newsom. It was totally disgusting. Totally disgusting. Hey, and by the way, Sam, I don't know what the address is with a burned-out building, but Rigatoni or whatever his name is, Kyle, let him know about this burned-out building because he hung up on me at the, at the community meeting the other day. You guys have a tendency to either walk me out or hang up on me in a community meeting. I guess my complaints aren't, aren't, aren't proper. Everybody on that city council, you're the natural disaster that I think Blair Beekman's talking about. Every one of you look at each other, you're the natural disasters. You guys should be ashamed of yourselves. You guys make the wrong decision for every single thing in this city. You wonder why?
That was the final speaker.
Mercifully. All right, the meeting's adjourned.